Everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. And call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please, Patty?
Commissioner Chalet.
Present.
Moyer.
Here.
Knack.
Here.
White House.
Here.
McCaffrey. Sarter.
Here. Any additions or deletions from the agenda tonight?
None from staff.
Thank you, staff. Um, any public comments? Now, this is not the Conell public comment. This is public comment and non-agenda items. So if anyone's here to make any comments on anything aside from the zoning map or Conell, this is the time to come up. Anyone? Okay, doesn't look like it. Um, move on to the consideration minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chalet.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Knack.
Yes.
White House.
Yes.
Sarter.
Yes. Uh, we also have the work session minutes from February sixth as well. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes from our work session on February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chalet.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Knack.
Yes.
White House.
Yes.
Sarter.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Um, this is the, uh, site plan review for the Conell Resource Plant. Um, we're gonna start with a staff presentation from Mr. Bird and Mr. Whalen. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm Paul Whalen, senior staff from Town of Wellington. I'm just, uh, this is staff planner, I apologize. Senior planner for Town of Wellington.
Thanks, Paul. And Paul did, um, was the lead planner on the review for the site plans. Um, I'm Cody Bird on the town's planning director. I've assisted Paul in that review and can certainly answer any questions from a higher level town perspective on our procedures, applications, um, or policies. So please refer to both of us in your questions. Paul will be answering most of the questions regarding the technical aspects of the site plan. If you have other higher level questions, you can direct those to me.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
Thank you and good evening. The item before you tonight is case number two zero two-two dash SPR zero three. Not working now. There's a request by Co- Conell Resources for approval on asphalt batch plant, site plan.
Zoom meetings up.
Yeah.
Mr. Bird. Would it make sense to turn that monitor towards the audience instead of facing this way, the one back there?
I have no problem with that and I can, I can do that. Um, we're, sounds like we're experiencing some technical difficulties with our, our Zoom streaming, so we're gonna troubleshoot that and thank you for changing the monitor.
Thank you, Vanna Whitehouse. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's kinda, just kinda wait for that.
Hopefully it'll let me.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience. We've got limited bandwidth on our internet, so we're trying to get the live stream for our online broadcasting back in, in order. Thanks for your patience.
It'll let me share. Big online. Slow over there. A big? Okay. Yeah, that's what's up there. Okay. But last time I did that, I lost it.
Okay.
In the interest of moving it along, I think we, we go.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
They can see my notes now. Alrighty, for the record, I guess, um, back at it. The pro- project site is located in the northern portion of the town. Yeah, go ahead, Patty. Is located, uh, south of Laramie County Road sixty-six and just west, and it's a button to the railroad line at sixty-six as it crosses, Burlington Northern Santa Fe crosses, uh, sixty-six. The site is comprised of approximately thirty-five acres. Yeah, it's. Uh, this.
When the slide's advancing online?
I'm not online. I just turned it off. That one. But it's not progressing when I click. That's him, but not over there.
That's one try to do is go back out to the other screen and go up on the, in the PowerPoint and hit, uh, slideshow.
Hey.
That might be it appears slideshow.
I didn't hear.
See in the slideshow?
Oh.
In PowerPoint? Just go up here, Patty, in the slideshow.
Yeah, but I gotta get to get them down and it won't.
Oh, wow.
That's the PowerPoint.
Let's, let's do what we can if we have to, to enhance the slides if we need to go out.
You just click on the slide and activate it. Just hit right there. No, no, for the. Okay, hit the slideshow from beginning.
Yeah, what about right clicking advance?
Yeah, it's not connecting at all.
Not showing what's up there. Do you wanna show me the shit?
We're, we're still trying to sort out the, uh, the slide presentation with the background information on it. Um, so we're gonna try a different avenue. While we're doing that, for those of you at home and here in the audience, um, Paul Whalen's going to go ahead and continue with some of that information while we try to connect the PowerPoint slides in a different way.
Thank you. Uh, the site located in the northern part of the town is zoned industrial. And an asphalt batch plant is a permitted land used in the industrial zone district. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Adjustment heard, um, a request for two variances for this site. Uh, the variances included, um, a setback variance of, uh, the, um, code requires a thousand feet separation between industrial use, um, and residential, um, zone district. Um, to the west directly is Sundance subdivision. It's a planted subdivision, but it's not, um, developed yet. Uh, the applicant requested an eight-hundred-foot setback and that variance was granted from a thousand to eight-hundred. There was also a height variance that was granted as well. The reason I mention that is that's set way for the site plan to be then prepared and submitted for town review and, and, uh, process and. Um, per the town's, um, comprehensive master plan that recently updated. The proposed business operation is consistent in that, um, the comprehensive plan encourages a diverse, diversifying the town's economic base. I mean, it also, um, wants to ensure new industrial developments are consistent with town's infrastructure, um, master plan, town infrastructure master plans and, uh, town's water efficiency plan. And, uh, and it. A project information. Again, I had a nice slideshow presented for all this, but. Project information, as mentioned, this, the site is zoned industrial, I for industrial. And an asphalt batch plant is a permitted land use with use-specific standards. And that's in section four oh three, um, four point oh three point twenty-one. And again, that, um, use-specific standard was the thousand-foot setback that was granted a variance. Uh, the Board of Adjustment, um, required six conditions of approval for those two variances. Um, number one, the site plan, um, once submitted and processed to the, um, the town's, um, land use code, that it would be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. Essentially, they wanted assurances that the conditions of approval, that number one condition would require the planning commission to verify and confirm that those, um, conditions of approval were, were satisfied on the site plan. So the height variance, um, and this is number two, condition number two. The height variance, um, is for a silo only. The seventy-foot height variance is for the silo only. And I'll skip to number four real quick, and there is to be no signage on the silo. They requested as part of the condition approval that there not be, um, signage on the silo. Jumping back to number three, they requested a fifteen-foot earthen berm and landscaping re- required, um, on the west side. Also, they require signage and operator policies, um, to, to disallow engine braking. There was concern about jake braking, um, through the neighborhood as these trucks come and go. I believe going from seventh, uh, County Road seven on the east, west on County Road, uh, sixty-six, there's a change in grade, which would require braking, and the neighbors were concerned about the jake brake noise. Um, so that was condition number five. And then, um, condition number six was that the, this site, um, which is licensed and regulated through state, county, and I believe federal regulations. There are certain aspects of the environmental issues on this to the town. Our site plan just does not address. Um, so those, there are regulations that, um, the Board of Adjustment felt that it was critical that all county, applicable county, state, all the permits and regulations were, um, adhered to and, and maintained throughout the operation of the site. And the board of, the board also mentioned and requested that the town supplied portable water source, um, is used for office space and, and man facilities or occupied facilities, um, versus plan operation or landscape. The applicant, um, did agree to use trucked water, I believe is, um, water, raw water or well water from off-site. They would truck it to the site, use it for landscape and plant operations. And, um, a minimal-sized, um, um, water tap and meter would be used for, um, the administration of office building, restrooms, uh, occupied building uses. Oh, well, the slides are up. The area neighbors, almost, there we go. The area neighbors and approximately the current town and county, um, property owners and land uses. You can see the purple indicates the, the industrial zone and on our, on our site. Um, to the west is Sundance, to the southwest is Buffalo Ridge. To the north, um, are agricultural operations and unincorporated Larama County. And to the east is the railroad I twenty-five, um, as well as, um, oper- uh, unincorporated Larama County properties. Some of the concerns that, um, neighborhood comments. Um, these were heard at the Board of Adjustment as well as what we've heard recently. Uh, there's been a flurry of them coming in today as well as, um, uh, throughout the process, which is part of the process, by the way. Neighborhood comments. Board of Adjustment conditions, the six conditions and the recommendation for water use to be followed. Um, the concerns were for air emissions and air quality, um, odor, um, noise, water, aesthetics, um, maybe as tractable facility or screened, um, operational standards and traffic impacts. And the, the checkmarks you'll see, those are what are within, um, what town had to address. That was what our, our code, um, allowed us to review and, and look at. Um, those things in the yellow, like I say, those are from state or some other regulatory agency. I would say experts in that, that those areas of, uh, of control and environmental concern. And this is the applicant's response, um, to that. PC approvals are satisfied, the firm is satisfied with, um, BOA conditions of approval and met our land use code for the site plan process. Site emissions monitored and controlled by state, county, state, and federal standards. Site operations are also limited. A fifteen-foot landscape berm. Um, cognizant site plan, meaning that they located the batch plant and the, um, processing um, facility, agri-process as far away from, uh, residential as they could. Relocation improvements to the local infrastructure, there'll be significant improvements to roadways. Uh, they will add a roadway to the west, which would be a future west-first street. Um, they also, um, addressed Zurich low-water use landscape. Um, predominantly, it's gonna be non-water, non-portable water source. Town water will not be used for plant operations. And, um, but, you know, we, we, the town required that the applicant maintain a good standing with the regulatory agencies. As they test and monitor the site, the applicant would be, um, would stay in good stand and is main, basically operate with the parameters of the, the regulations established by the, the, um, licensing, committees and groups, state, county, and federal. Oh, yes. And, and again, these are the, um, checkmark. These indicate what we in the, we've gone through and what we've dealt with through the site plan process, um, things within our perusal to, to address. Um, we are here to address the, uh, BOA condition of approval and the site plan requirements of section two twelve. Um, the fifteen-foot landscape berm, um, has been offered with, um, a variety of tree species to screen the site. The applicant was, was sensitive and, and, um, aware of, um, locating the, um, facilities strategically on the site. The office administration facilities, um, basically just operate, o- offices for staff to operate and deal with, deal with the public and the clients and so forth is on, is on the west. Also, shop maintenance and, um, relatively light industrial use facilities are on the, uh, on the west as well. The more heavy industrial activities are located, um, as close to the railroad as we could, as, as the client could push them away from the residences, uh, as much as, as possible. All right, this is the site plan. This is pretty much the general layout the client submitted for, for, uh, referral review. You click that, Patty? Are you doing? And these are pretty much the operations. Like, they're kinda, the clouds are there to just give a general idea on the location of the, um, of the operation. Again, the bash plant is up in the northeast. Um, material storage and handling is, is also, um, further to the east. I, I'm sorry, to the east, south, south of the bash plant, along the east line. Office admin in the northwest, that's gonna be kind of the front door to the public. Um, you'll see here in a second, the berms that are proposed there are reduced in height to comply with screening the parking lot. Um, but that's gonna be a, a more intensely landscaped with shrubs, ground covers, um, trees and so forth, but it's gonna be more intimately, uh, landscape for basically that, like I say, that front door to the public, and that will be the limited public access to this site. Um, south of that is gonna be the fuel wash, um, facility. Um, then south of that would be the maintenance shop. And then the low point on the site is the, um, detention basin in the very southwest corner. As you can see, the berms, there's fifteen-foot berms to screen the material storage, to also screen the batch plant, um, to screen the, um, fuel wash, uh, area. Uh, and like I say, the reduced berm height with, with land and more intense landscaping for the admin office building. Um, also, again, I emphasized, uh, again, just show the impact, eight hundred, eight hundred-foot, um, setback to the Sundance subdivision due west. And it's approximately twenty-eight hundred feet to the next, uh, to Buffalo, I'm sorry, Buffalo Creek, about twenty-hundred, eight, twenty-eight hundred feet to that subdivision. And that's the northeast corner of, um, Buffalo Creek subdivision. Um, you will see, uh, on the far west, west-first street will extend along the, um, western property line, and that at some point may serve, um, also, and again, negotiations are ongoing, but it may allow for Sundance to have as possible second access into their, uh, site as well. So that future road, um, don't know will serve as an easement, utility access easement, it will also provide second access for, um, our plant location, but also has future, um, possibilities as well. That lingered too long. Okay, yeah, and, uh, this shows the landscape, the, the trees accentuate and, and, uh, um, enhancing the, the screening effect of the, um, of the proposed berms. Um, you would have, I'm not sure if anyone caught it earlier, but the, um, the slide that showed the entrance to the existing plant, um, in Timnit, that shows a approximately ten to twelve-foot berm with landscape, and that's what we would expect here as well. But these, these will be fifteen-foot berms. So the screening effect will be much, uh, much more enhanced. Should be much more enhanced. Um, next is our truck route. The primary, um, route will be from Al Canyon down Laramie County Road seven, um, across Laramie County Road sixty-six to our site location. It'll be right in and right out. Left in, right out. Um, there'll be other, um, secondary, um, possibilities as far as route travel, truck route travel is concerned. I believe that. There we go. There'll be some to the, some travel to Laramie County Road nine on the, on the west, uh, along sixty-six. And there is, there is our site in, in and out of, I'm sorry, the access in and out of our, our site. This, the bash plant location basically is, it's gonna bring raw material in, it's gonna transport it in, process it, then transport it out as their clients and, and customers, um, need. I'm no expert by any stretch of the imagination about hot asphalt, um, processor, but I do believe it's only done part, part of the year based upon temperature. Um, and again, the client, the applicant can speak to that in greater detail.
And, and Mr. Warren, will, will you be describing your plant operations in your presentation? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, per the referral reviews, the applicant, I, has agreed to, um, and there, again, we're in, still in the process of refining and and, uh, finalizing our site plan. Um, it's been a team effort to get to address the issues and so forth. Um, but the applicant will improve and upgrade, um, the various roads, um, I believe sixty-six and, and possibly, um, sixty-six east and west of the site, I believe. There's also gonna be a plating process gonna be required with this application, um, once the site plan is, is, um, finalized. And that will be to establish easements, um, grant more, dedicate more right-of-way. Um, just basically, this is an unplanted lot, so we will eventually have a, a platted, um, exhibit for this project as well.
Paul's presenting the, on the site plan information, and he made a reference to there would be future dedications of right-of-way and utility easements. And a big part of that conversation comes down to if the planning commission were to change the configuration or alignment of any of the internal roads, accesses, or site operations, it would impact where those right-of-ways and easements would be dedicated. And so it didn't make sense to dedicate those up front and then work around them without knowing if the site was going to get approved to, per the planning commission's standards. So what Paul's alluding to is there will be a future step to dedicate the right-of-ways and easements if the, the site is approved. And based on the configuration of layouts. I should, I'll also add to that the, um, the road improvements that, that, um, should say Mr. Whalen alluded to, uh, for County Road sixty-six is still under review by the town engineering staff. Larama County Engineering and C dot had some comments as well with regards to truck routes. So the, the public improvement projects for the, the road improvements are still being evaluated. So the the public improvement projects for the the road improvements are still being evaluated. And we'll have to comply with all applicable town, county and state requirements. Um but those, what we determined was that those um adjustments to the public roadways. Um would not impact the site design as you see it presented to you today. So there's still some improvements needed and those final designs would be coordinated, but the site that you're seeing today wouldn't be impacted by those changes.
What was the next slide, I guess, there we go. Um this is the architectural character of of the um buildings and structures on site. It is a industrial facility, so we can we metal buildings and so forth are. Anticipated in industrial zone properties and uses and so forth. The applicant has um again, the front door to the to the public, this admin office building has a stone Wayne Scott. The colors are earth tone and and again, it is a metal building, but it does uh offer a. A a nice um image to the public, to the public face. Would enhance with the landscape and the Burman and so forth. And again, these are the colors, these are the the um stone materials and so forth. For the uh. For the proposed um office building. I will also add that uh this color theme will be carried out throughout the throughout the site. To be consistent and so forth, but again, the purpose of the fifteen foot burn was to screen as much of the site. As possible from public view, the landscape and the Burman and so forth, but um. You know, the the, excuse me, the the office building, which is gonna be visible from the street. They embellished it was um some additional architectural character, uh features and so forth. Yes, now we go on to this. To summarize the site, as mentioned, is zone industrial. And the batch plant, a batch batch plant is per land use with use specific standards. The board of adjustment granted two variances. For the uh for the site plan to be uh to be prepared and submitted. That includes the eight hundred foot setback, reduc- reduced from the down from the one thousand foot. Step back requirement. Number two, the height variance was allowed to exceed forty five feet for the zone district up to seventy feet only for the silo. And once these variants are in place, the site plan could then be prepared and submitted. To to date, most of the comments, almost all the comments have been um reviewed and and are in process to be refined and addressed. The uh the the um we are in the second review process now. Uh we have revised plans that we are um in the process of reviewing to confirm the comments from initial review were. Were addressed, and again, it's a process by which. Staff reviews makes comments and then feeds those back to the applicant for for addressing resolution. And lastly, I would say that the applicant will be required to comply with um town code, but also the the town. Will expect the applicant and the operations facility to adhere to and remain in good standing with all regulatory agencies. Um for those those um issues that are that are relative to this industry and just to this industry. Summary. And these are the findings for approval out of section two twelve point three for the site plan. Steph has processed the application compliance to town lands, uh land use code. The site is consistent with the town's comprehensive master plan and uh land use code, the final plat. Will a final plat will be um processed in the future. Uh buildings. Buildings and structures uh do not infringe upon any easements.
Sure, I'm gonna, I just wanted to jump in here too. On this slide for the uh criteria for approval of a site plan, what you're seeing A through F is from the land use code. The bold in parentheses at the back end is the staff recommendation on each of those findings, and that's what Paul was just beginning to describe. I just wanted to point out the way this slide is presented, the italics is the finding for approval from the land use code. And the bold in parentheses is staff's recommendation based on the findings in the staff report, and that has been presented on here in this presentation. This this specific slide is not in your agenda packet. The uh you know, for reference, the you know, finding A there, the consistency with the comprehensive plan Paul presented on earlier. That ability was one of the slides that we didn't have up and running because of technical difficulties. But what what that's alluding to is the future land use map, which identifies the area um along the railroad and along County Road seven as industrial and commercial properties. There's a couple of goals in the comprehensive plan um that Paul alluded to, and and we can certainly go back to those slides now that we have it working here. Um if that's advantageous. So again, I just want to kind of point out how this slide was presented for presentation purposes. Mr. Well, if you want to continue now, thank you.
Uh the density and dimensions comply with Article four use regulations. And again, it should be noted that again, noted that the B O A granted the variance for the use specific standard and for the height. The applicant has worked through the development standards for Article five for extralight, and and these are the site plan issues. Um extralight and fencing, landscaping and screening, Austin Park and. Austin Park and load and trash dumpster, et cetera. So those are the issues that we um work through with the site plan process and um those. We are still refining that now the second review. So with that. I will conclude and myself or the applicant, uh their consultants are here to address any questions. The planning commissioner or the audience may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we get into any kind of general discussion, we'll go ahead and let um. Uh Mr. Warren from Connell do his presentation as well, and then we'll bring it back to the planning commission. So, Mr. Warren, floor is yours.
I I will give you one second, I'll have it up for you. Maybe start with the introduction, I'm, I'll have to pull it up and then our technology is moving real slow.
No, fair fair enough, Cody. My name is John Warren, I'm the president of Connell Resources, I I appreciate you having me tonight and and thank you for your time. I will try not to uh. Cover the things uh Mr. Wayland covered, um but I do have a little bit overlap in regard to some of those issues, but. I really tried to focus my time on um what we've seen as some of the concerns from from the public and from the neighbors and 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 address those and and hopefully I can. Help with help with those aspects of it, so.
You might want to speak a little closer to the microphone.
Is that better? Okay.
Our upload, our upload and download speeds are a little bit slow, so the power point's loading.
I have a flash drive, does that help?
I'm almost there, I'm pretty sure, assuming that it also broadcasts. It's literally on its way. I wish I could make it go faster, but we're we're there. There it is.
You can go to the the first slide, please. So if you would, uh I I wanted to spend a little time just explaining about who we are as Connell Resources and. And uh give a little detail of our history, but uh um from the slide, we were founded in Loveland in nineteen forty six and incorporated nineteen sixty nine. Um we've been a a general contractor in infrastructure side of things in Northern Colorado for seventy six years. Um we are local, we are family and employee owned. We generally operate about a sixty mile radius of Fort Collins. Two hundred and sixty full-time employees and and eighteen of whom now, seventeen at the uh. At the board of adjustments meeting, we're at eighteen who are residents of Wellington. So we are, we are growing, um but we self-perform earthwork, pipeline utilities, um aggregate production, asphalt paving. Um and we've safely operated an asphalt plant at the intersection of Army and I twenty five for over thirty years. Uh the facility that we're proposing in Wellington will have thirty five to forty full-time employees and and certainly will generate additional sales tax and property tax revenues for the town of Wellington. Next, please. A question that we get is is why Wellington and why the site, um and quite frankly. We didn't, our intention was to find a site to move our plant that was zoned appropriately and was used by right. And the site filled that role. But it keeps us also in our in our main operations in Laramo County, that's where our roots are, um it's close to our employee base. Maintains proximity to many of our customers, C dot, local municipalities, including the town of Wellington, C S U and local developers. Uh the site has close access to Owl Canyon Road and I twenty five, which is critical for us from an aggregate supply standpoint. Um our primary aggregate sources are out of Carr, Colorado, which is about six miles south of the Wyoming border um along I twenty five. So we'll be hauling the the dry aggregate down from Carr to the plant site. And for you that don't understand asphalt, it's about ninety five percent sand and gravel and about five percent um asphalt cement, which makes the hundred percent for asphalt. So it's really just a blending of those two raw materials. And again, the specific property was zoned appropriately for what fits, you know, for our use, and it fit within the town's comprehensive plan, which is adopted in twenty twenty one. So again. Apologize to everyone here, but the our intent was not to come in and cause a surprise. We really felt we were coming to a to a site that was zoned appropriately for the use that we were looking for. So a little bit of the project introduction, just a little background, um I won't spend a lot of time here, because Paul did cover this. But um some of the history, so the site that we're looking at was zoned industrial in two thousand. The the Dalbert or Sundance subdivision was planted in two thousand and six and then modified in two thousand and nineteen, so. And then some of the land use code that we're currently operating under um was was adopted in twenty twenty two. Um and again, under the heavy or the industrial, um the group does include asphalt plants, so. So a little touch on the site plan a little bit um that we've gone through that. The industrial use, again, we did, we have located as far from residential areas as possible, so the actual. At asphalt mixing will be on the upper or the northeast corner. Uh the Birmingham is layered and the heights to mitigate, it's not just to mitigate sight, but to mitigate noise as well. And then we've really have extensive road paving within the site, and that's uh has a dust mitigation technique. And and just help with the site appearance, so. Paul touched a little bit on the public infrastructure improvements, um these are all the things that we're doing at our cost. To to make the site really workable for us, but we'll be paving and expanding the roadway from the intersection of County Road seven. Uh and County Road sixty six to the site, uh that includes bike lanes and and we are actually partnering with B N S F and Laramo County to uh. Install a safer railroad crossing at County Road sixty six and the B N S F, which will include uh crossing arms which are not there currently. There's an additional right-hand turn at Laramo County Road seven and Owl Canyon. Um and then we'll be extending water lines and sewer lines um from the south up through the site, which will also be available for future development area. The next three slides are just quick renderings um to give an idea, and it's really to show also the the silo heights, um which was from the variance. Uh the silos are eight hundred square feet and footprint, so they're not large as far as area, but they are seventy feet tall. So again, from what will be the the proposed new first street, kind of our second entrance, that's the view of the silos or a rendering of it. Go to the next one. Here's from the northwest corner of the property or at the intersection of First Street and County Road sixty six, looking back to the east. That's our office building is the white building there, um so it really does. Fairly well. Mitigate the 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 site views of of the plant at this point in time. Excellent, Cody, and then along County Road sixty six, just trying to give a good representation of the Birmingham sidewalks. Um and what the plant silos will look like behind us. As Cody alluded to, um just speaking to our operation a little bit. So asphalt mixing plants, or I'll call them A M Ps from here. Again, one of the uh from from the variance request is that Connell sign will not be on those silos, though that'll come off and be repainted. But our 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 mixing plant mixes primarily two raw materials together, it's it's a fairly simple process, it's aggregates and asphalt cement. The aggregates come in from our gravel pits um in Carr, the asphalt cement comes directly in trucks. Already heated from refineries, either Suncor or through a other facility that comes out of Cheyenne. So there is no production of asphalt cement on the site, it's simply brought in and hot tankers stored in hot. Silos and then mixed when we heat the asphalt rock or the aggregates up. So flame never touches that asphalt cement. It's really a process where. We heat up the rock and and when you see an asphalt plant operation, it's steam that's coming out of the uh. The stack, and that is the heat. The heat uh heating up the asphalt and drying out the aggregate. Um our plant uses compressed natural gas, so it is clean. Low odor, I'm not gonna say no odor, but it's very low in order odor, um so. Little background on just the the mixing. Typical paving season again is April through November, so the plant will run those months. Usually five to six days a week, uh we try not to work weekends, but it is inevitable. The plant will undergo maintenance in the winter and the off-season. And generally, our daily operations are uh seven AM to five PM. I guess also one last piece to that is we average our average production um out of this plant, which we don't expect to change coming here is about a hundred and fifty thousand tons to a hundred and eighty thousand tons per year. Now, as you, as I'll explain later on, our permit actually allows for three hundred thousand tons, but um at this point in time, we've never gotten close to that. Um and our intent isn't that that will happen, so. So to get to the the meat of things here, um you know, the concerns that we've certainly heard are uh trucking routes, um the emissions coming from our mixing plant. Odor and odor mitigation and and noise. So the the first piece. Is the truck haul routes. Um and and this will contradict Paul a little bit, um I apologize for that, but I want to make sure this is clear. All incoming and outgoing trucks um are going County Road sixty six to County Road seven, then north to Owl Canyon to I twenty five. There will not be any traffic going westbound on County Road sixty six unless it's a local delivery, local project, something for the town of Wellington. But our haul routes will not go to the west, everything will go, and this is. Everything will go, and this is really to follow the comprehensive plan as laid out, that County Road seven is the corridor for haul routes for Wellington. And then to Owl Canyon and then it'll disperse. If we have to go and we're going into Fort Collins, they'll take Owl Canyon to the west or elsewhere, it's to I twenty-five and south. But I think one last point there, yeah, we, we don't want our trucks going through town, it doesn't do us any good. We know, we don't want going by I Stone or going by Wellington High School. There's no benefit for us either. So just make sure that that's clear and we have incorporated things into our plans to, uh, to engineer out and we'll enforce that internally as well, so. Now, as far as your asphalt mixing plant emissions, um, a little bit of background, some environmental health and safety, just, just some references. Cause I think this gets obscured in, in, in a lot of people's research, but in, in two thousand and two, the Environmental Protection Agency, uh, removed asphalt plants from the list of major source emitters, uh, and hazardous air pollutants or haps under the Clean Air Act. The EPA concluded that, uh, asphalt manufacturing facilities do not have the potential to emit haps approaching major source levels. So we are considered a minor source. Neither, uh, the EPA nor OSHA Hazard Cloud Hazard Classification Scheme defines or identifies asphalt as hazardous. In fact, it's innocuous nature and material is recognized by the EPA with regards to agency exemptions on asphalt plant mixtures from certain regulations. Those regulations are, we don't have to have, uh, a spill prevention plan at our asphalt plant for the asphalt cement. Because when asphalt cement cools, it hardens and it's, it's innocuous, it really doesn't, there's no, it's not going to leach into the groundwater, it's not doing any of those things. It, uh, so it, the EPA is exempted for certain things like that. Regarding OSHA, uh, the proper hazard classification for ass, for paving asphalt and asphalt mixes, whether ambient temperature or production is non-hazardous. And I caution you, there is the distinct difference between paving asphalt and roofing asphalt, and that seems to get convoluted in, in people's thoughts as well. So, um, oh, I, I know OSHA has been brought up in this, I mean, OSHA is an occupational standard, so that's for workers working around asphalt. You know, eight hours a day, not necessarily in a community aspect, but there are no currents, um, OSHA standards for permissible exposure limits. Um, for asphalt fumes, either in the general industry, which is sub-part nineteen ten, if you really want to get into it, or the construction industry, which is sub-part nineteen twenty-six. So this relates to workers at the plant as well as workers involved in the transportation or laydown. So OSHA, I, I guess is, is proof and background of the non-hazardous nature of asphalt, they have not come up with the permissible exposure limit. If you're not familiar with permissible exposure limits, OSHA has a reference of hundreds of chemicals that they have permissible exposure limits and asphalt is not one of them. And then the last point here, I apologize, this is taking long, but I think it's important. The asphalt plant emissions in Colorado are regulated by the Car Department of Public Health, CDPHD, and Laramo County Health and Environment Monitor's Compliance Fair Quality Regulations. So we're required to meet all federal, state and local emissions and air quality standards. And you've heard that quite a bit. Uh, we have multiple permits through CDPHD in Laramo County for our plants and will for this plant. The plant is subject to routine inspection by Laramo County. You don't have to announce it, they come by anytime. And our asphalt plant went through a full emission certification test with CDPHD in October of twenty twenty-one and that we comply with all emissions regulations. So asphalt mixing plant emissions are really similar in type to quantity or quantity of emissions from common everyday sources. As confirmed by CDPHD, um, asphalt mixing plants have been well characterized regarding their gaseous emissions potential, um, of which ninety-nine point nine percent of the, are from the combustion or fuel used to dry the aggregates. So there is a misnomer that what's coming out of our stack is somewhat is an asphalt fume and is not correct. It is steam and it's what's coming off of the natural gas that's used to, to heat the aggregates. It's a big burner, we use a lot of natural gas, I'm not going to lie, but it's no different than what's coming off of a furnace in your house or a furnace at, um, Wellington High School. Same natural gas, same process, same emissions, other than we just use more of it. So residential school, school facilities, um, automobile exhausts, and the quantity and type of, of asphalt mixing plant emissions have also been cared, compared to emissions of fast food restaurants, gas stations, uh, all located with, in, um, Wellington's town border. Much text here, but, uh. So just for example, um, and we've referenced a study that was done by a Sanborn Head and Associates, which is an environmental consulting and engineering firm, just to do, um, an emissions comparison report. Um, and that, this link actually works. There's a letter that was sent to the planning commission to, if you'd like to read it in, in, in full. But basically annual VOC emissions from an asphalt mixing plant, um, are equivalent to twenty residential fireplaces. And this is a plant that produces, that their baseline was two hundred thousand mixed tons a year. And we're, as we've said, we're less than that. The benzene emissions, which again is from the combustion of the fuel, not from the asphalt cement, um, are equivalent to a single gas station, filling station through a year or a single fast food restaurant. And I know those are surprising, but, um, benzene comes off of gas stations and it's also, again, the fuel used in, in fast food restaurants as well. So the concentration of, uh, lastly, the concentration of formaldehyde emissions, uh, again, from the combustion fuel uh, at a thousand feet from the asphalt mixing plant is a fraction of the background ambient air and over a hundred times lower than what would be found in conventional home indoor air, which again, surprising to hear, but drywall, wallboard furniture has off-gassing that has formaldehyde in it. And actually the indoor air quality from those things is worse than what comes off of our asphalt plant. So what's, I know this is difficult to read, on the right side is, is a, a copy of our approved construction, operation and maintenance plan that we have to submit to CDPHD and be approved before we operate. So we cannot get this until we actually are set up and approved, uh, and then we submit to CDPHD when our plant is set up. They review the plan, give us our parameters, and that's when we can actually start to operate. The highlighted sections, um, talk about all the record keeping that we have to do on a quarterly and annual basis. Um, and we have to have those available at any time for CDPHD upon their inspection. Laramo County, again, to repeat, Laramo County and CDPHD routinely inspect our plants for compliance. Um, and one thing we've committed to do, um, per Laramo County's request, uh, is to perform an air emissions dispersion model, and we're going to do that this spring off of our existing plant. Uh, we've hired an environmental engineer who's going to map that emissions and apply it to the wind speeds at the site in Wellington. And the existing, um, environmental conditions at the site off of County Road sixty-six. And, and then we can sit down with the town and Laramo County Public Health and go through that, uh, dispersion model and see if there's anything we can do to tweak our, tweak our plan, uh, tweak the site plan, uh, look at our equipment and try to, uh, further mitigate any impacts we're going to have on the area. So the next, um, topic, odor mitigation. So the top is just an excerpt from Laramo County Site Plan Referral Comments, basically explaining what they're going to hold us to. So these are the things we have to follow as far as odor goes. They use what's called a nasal ranger, um, and we own a nasal ranger, uh, to, uh, to measure odor, um, for compliance. And, and when they get if and when they get complaints, that's what they come out and use. But because our primary fuel source is compressed natural gas, uh, clean burning with little no odor, uh, we really don't have an odor issue. Our last inspection was November eighth of twenty twenty-one. On the right, the yellow there, and that's the notes from the field inspection, which I'd be happy to provide. But no odor complaints have been received by the department for the site. No odor noted at the time of inspection and we're in compliance. The inspector was onsite for an hour and a half while we were running at full, full bore. And again, we, we have three people on our staff, three, uh, trained environmental health, safety experts. They're all trained in the use of this nasal ranger and they will be monitoring our own internal odor. So we, we've never had a complaint in thirty years on odor, don't expect to start, uh, but we do know it's a concern. So we want to make sure that it's clear that we take it seriously, um, and what we'll stay in compliance and make sure we don't have those complaints. Noise, uh, again, another, another issue, and, and again, just, we have to follow the noise ordinance, which is number ninety-seven dash oh-three, which specifies maximum sound levels of fifty-five decibels are at the receiving property line. So that's any property line around us. So again, we spent a lot of time with the site plan to incorporate sound mitigation measures through Birmingham and selective layouts. We've hired a consulting engineer as well, performed predictive sound analysis at the request of the town. And this will create a, a contour map or concentric circles, um, that shows, um, what our sound should be from the plant. I'd like to have that now, but we have to be running and since we haven't, it's not April yet, we're not running, this came up in January. But we're under contract to do so. That same, uh, environmental engineer did a hypothetical study using our, our, our loudest piece of equipment, which is our generator. It, uh, is it ninety decibels at the source? And his calculations coming out is that we'd be about eight decibels from that, um, at seven hundred and fifty feet away from that source. So we, we feel like we'll be in compliance, but we'll make sure that study is done, um, submitted to the town and, and very clear that, that we will, um, be in compliance. A few of them are offsite or minor things, again, the Jake breaks. No problem, we've heard that and we can enforce that and we'll, we've, uh, Laramo County will let us post those signs on County Road sixty-six. Um, and then we'll install white noise backup alarms on our equipment that's used at the plant. We can't go without backup alarms, this is an OSHA standard, um, but we can use what's, what's known as a white noise and it's just a, it's more of a scratchy versus the heavy beeping, um, and so we've committed to use those at the facility as well. And then I, I just wanted to give a little perspective as well, um, on asphalt plants in Northern Colorado, and these are all of our competitors. So I didn't put names of them, but I did put locations. And, and just to give you an idea of what offsets look like at other asphalt plants around Northern Colorado. The first line is that there's approximately thirty-five hundred asphalt mixing plants in the United States, actually sixty-five in Colorado. And really most plants are located in urban and suburban areas. Asphalt plant, I mean, asphalt covers ninety-four percent of the roads in the United States. So there is a need. And again, most of these plants are near residential areas, schools, river streams. So I just wanted to put this in, you know, the Fort Collins plant, Taft Hill Road, six hundred feet from residential development, five hundred feet from the Pooter Trail and the Pooter Trail, Trailhead. Windsor Asphalt Plant on Laramore County Road five, just five hundred feet from a brand-new residential development, they're actually building around them. And sixteen hundred feet from a new charter school, same, the charter school's being, was built long after the asphalt plant was there. Uh, Loveland, a little farther out, um, but on State Highway four oh-two, twenty-one hundred feet from residential development, fifteen hundred feet from the Big Thompson River Recreation Areas. Uh, and then lastly, in Greeley on Thirty-Fifth Avenue, it's twelve hundred feet from residential development and twenty-five hundred feet from the Pooter Trail. So just a little perspective on, on what asphalt plants in Northern Colorado and their, and their setbacks from and impacts are. Lastly, if you can see this, this is the one on County Road five, um, the asphalt plant's kind of in the upper left-hand corner. But you're five hundred feet from back a lot of, uh, of residents and, and sixteen hundred feet due north of charter, of a new charter school. So, um, and these are all developments that have come and built around asphalt plants. We see that often, um, why I don't, can't speak to it. I know there's generally, I'm not a realtor, I'm not an expert in real estate, but there'll be questions on property values and those type of things. And, and quite frankly, we just don't see that being an issue. And this is an example of such, uh, the houses are being built, they're being sold and it's very near an asphalt plant. So lastly, slide that just kind of lays out the site plan again, um, we, we've spent a lot of time, um, meeting with, with the adjacent property owners, discussing our plans, taking input from them, from the Sundance subdivision to Piper Industrial Park, to the Waldos that are, uh, that are really impacted directly west or, excuse me, directly east of us. Again, talking to those folks, listening to them, trying to do what we can to, uh, to improve this. I think all of them, I, I think I can speak to that they understand that the, the property was zoned industrial. They've expected the industrial development to come. And, uh, I, I think in your packets, there's letters from a few of them that, that speak to, um, their support of the project and their understanding of the project. And, and I just want to convey, you know, my personal sentiments that, you know, we want to be a part of the Wellington community. It's important to us, it's a major investment for us. And, and, and part of that is, is being a good neighbor, listening to folks and doing what we can. We know we do have an impact, that is absolute, we're not going to sit here and say we don't. But at the same time, we're a vital piece of infrastructure that's needed. We're a primary employer and, and we're local, um, and, and Northern Colorado is our home and, uh, it's critical for us. So, um, I hope that answers some questions and I'm happy to answer any more I can.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, I appreciate the time. Any general quick questions or comments from Cody evidently? Yes, Mr. Burden.
Sorry, I, I wanted to also acknowledge and, and thank everyone for being here. Town staff received, uh, quite a few, uh, emails, letters, correspondence and writing, um, regarding this, this, um, application and this request tonight. Those email correspondence letters that we received in writing were provided to the planning commission. We emailed that in two batches, once around two o'clock this afternoon and once around five o'clock this afternoon. And we've provided those in print copies in front of you as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge as part of the meeting process here that we did receive comments from, I'm sure many of the folks that are here in the room tonight. And some indicated that they weren't able to attend, but wanted to express their, their comments in writing. So we, we have provided every comment that staff received in writing to the planning commission for consideration tonight.
Perfect, thank you, Cody. Again, just any, any clarification on anything from staff or anything from Mr. Warren and Connell, uh, before we open it up to public comment? Anybody from the board? Just general, anything that, anything that needs clarified before we move on to public comment? There will be plenty of time for question and answer afterwards, I'll just clarify that. Okay, if the board's good, thank you, Ms. Warren, I think you're good for the moment, appreciate it. Another reminder, if you haven't signed in yet and you plan on speaking, please sign in at the sign-in sheet. I will just be reading down the list, if your name is on it, you'll have an opportunity to speak. If your name is not on it, you will not. Patty, would you mind grabbing that for me quick? Or Cody, whoever's on the end, I suppose. Sir. This is for Connell, the other one is for the public, um, zoning map for later. Hey guys, we'll go ahead and get started with the public comment, um, first is Chris Pletcher.
Chairman, while, while he's coming up here, I did leave a second sign-in sheet at the table there, so if anyone came in late and would like to, please feel free to still come in and sign your name in to speak on, in the public comments.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission, my name is Chris Pletcher, I live at nine zero eight eight Raging Bull Lane in Buffalo Creek. My initial concerns were related to groundwater quality and air quality, and I feel like the presentation tonight has adequately addressed those concerns with the state and federal regulations and the plant performance history. But I'd like to add, I'm also a licensed professional civil engineer with more than twenty-five years' experience in Northern Colorado. And multiple times in my twenty-five years' experience, I've been across the table from Connell with my job being keeping them honest, making sure that they deliver the quality product. And what I would say to the planning commission is you couldn't find a more conscientious or competent contractor to be proposing in Wellington. Their word is good, they do what they say, they run a clean plant. Their word is good, they do what they say, they run a clean plant, in fact, I'm the general manager of the Fort Collins Love and Water District. They are a customer in our district and we don't have comments or complaints from the neighbors adjacent to their current facility in Timman. So I believe what they're saying, the concerns that they've addressed, I take it face value. They've demonstrated integrity in every time that I've worked with them, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pletcher. Jason Waldo. And just a quick reminder, also, the public comment time is limited to three minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commission, for listening to us tonight, we've been here before, a few months ago. My family owns the property directly to the east, and that's where we've been for forty-five years. And we were hoping that everything would stay the same always, but it hasn't. And twenty years ago, it got zoned industrial, and so we were concerned as to what would come in. We heard about this proposal and we've had extensive meetings with John. Our biggest concern was noise with the trucks, primarily the Jake breaks. That's been addressed, although I did notice on the slide tonight, it might be a typo that it speaks of westbound. Jake break restrictions, but I would also ask that it's considered for eastbound also. On the way out, because there's a hill going down to the east. So we feel as our family that this is a good opportunity for us to have. A quality integral company next door as neighbors. We know that something's coming industrial. And with the limited hours of service. The limited time throughout the year and the track record of Connell, we have come out in support of it. So. We're looking forward to being good neighbors if it gets approved, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldo. I'll apologize in advance if I butcher this name, Janelle Skamanen? Skamorn, gotcha, sorry, hence the apology, thank you.
So Janelle Scamahorn, I live in Buffalo Creek. It was a very nice presentation, thank you, I guess my biggest question is. After doing some research, the Box Elder Creek goes right by where the plant is and. The Box Elder Creek was the watershed, it's a flood zone, I should say, and it's the entire town of Wellington. And it was developed into agribusiness and agri-search corridor, which includes Budweiser, CSU, Horticulture Research. And agricultural research and storms and flooding over the years have caused sediment erosion and toxins to seep into the ground. So I guess my biggest question for Cornell is what is the mitigation for storm water contamination? I don't, you didn't mention that in your presentation at all, excuse me, I'm a first timer, so. And then another thing that came up through my research, and you kind of spoke to some of the air pollutants and I realized the EPA. Will set general production guidelines and they leave it up to the town to decide. If you're going to allow those EPA pollutants in the air, but in Flint, Michigan. An asphalt, Ajax asphalt plant was built sixteen hundred feet from residents and. There is contaminants in the, or pollutants in the air fifty miles from that plant. And now the town residents are suing the town of Flint for allowing that to go into the town. So those are my comments on the air pollutant mitigation, and then my question for you is what is the storm water? Mitigation if that were to happen? I don't know if he's supposed to just add or answer?
Not at this time, it's not back and forth, we'll, we'll address questions at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Rachel, Rachel Hayes. Sixty-three fifty-two Wild West. There she is.
I was gonna say something about not being happy, but I also emailed it to you guys. And it kind of seems like a decision has already been made, so thank you.
No, no decision, we're, we're still at the public comment, we have, we have much more to go tonight. James Raymond.
Hello there, Jim, James Raymond, I live in Buffalo Creek, so I want to ask a question to the audience, how many folks here live in Buffalo Creek, raising your hand? Pretty good turnout, huh? Do you see that? Thirty-five, forty people, probably, I get that acknowledged, yes, okay. It's, it's like the chicken and the egg, which came first? I heard that Cornell has their plant Windsor, not Windsor, Timman, it's been there for a long time, everything's good. Now there's a construction housing encroaching on it, okay, here Buffalo Creek has been there. Since two thousand and six. So now this is encroaching on us. John, I believe what, what he said is excellent presentation, we talked in tonnage. I'm not sure if the people in the audience understand what tonnage is and how it's transported. How many truckloads will be moving up and down the road? We talked about mitigation on the routes to and from the asphalt plant, will that be done before? Or after the plant, if it's approved, and if so, what's the timeframe on that? What are we going to do in the meantime on County Road Seven? County Roads sixty-six and a railroad crossing, because there's a lot of things we have in place if the plant is approved. But is it going to be like? Highway one exit here right now, you know, it's backed up, really don't have a, a good answer on when that's going to be addressed. Is that going to be Al Canyon? In a couple of years if the plant is approved. So those are my questions, I wish you the best of luck, John. Your presentation is excellent, causes a tease, dot the i's. But I think the rest of the folks in Buffalo Creek have a concern about the property values. Personally, I worry about truck traffic, I've seen it in my career. And that's probably the biggest thing, and when I asked how many people here are in Buffalo Creek, I didn't see any hands in the front here. So I take it none of the city or the planning commission is in Buffalo Creek? None whatsoever?
There are only six of us.
Right, right, so none of you guys will really be affected like we will. Well, you live by the school, question is Buffalo Creek, and you will, willing to. I'll offer my home and you can watch from my top window of the one bedroom to watch the construction, so appreciate the talk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raymond. Ryan Burdis.
How you doing? I also live in Buffalo Creek, just wanted to voice my concern about potential impact on property values among other things. I didn't really see anything mentioned about that, research I've done shows that basically no property value ever increases in the vicinity. Of an asphalt plant, they only decrease potentially up to twenty percent. So I was wondering if anybody had any information on that and any kind of assurances as to whether or not we would have any recourse. If anything goes wrong with the plant, or if people are unsatisfied with health concerns after the plant is built and things of that nature, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burdis. Same with the next one, apologies in advance, Sean Younging, Younghein? Eighty-nine sixty-two smoke signal? Lisa Clay.
Good evening, I am Lisa Clay and actually my family is the owners of Advanced Tank Construction Company. And the owners of the property in question, and speaking of history, I just wanted to say, like we said today. We zoned it industrial and the town actually approached us, I happened to have known the city attorney at the time. And we worked together to zone it industrial on purpose. Because we were very concerned when we moved out here in nineteen eighty-four, it was all ag land and there was. Northern Colorado water next to us on the other side of the railroad track, a couple of houses to the south of us. But basically it was ag, it was a dirt road to get there, County Road sixty-four was all dirt. And we saw as houses were starting to be built, we saw that growth and we said, you know what? We need to, in essence, build a buffer, and so we bought the land from County Road sixty-four to sixty-six. Purposely because it made sense, the railroad tracks on one side, Box Elder is on another. And we do have to do water mitigation ourselves also, so I can answer that also at some point. But anyway, it was purposely done and then set up from our perspective in the town to keep it industrial so that. There wouldn't be any residential, we wouldn't run into problems, you now add next to us a beautiful park that's been put in place. And everyone has grown to us without anybody thinking about the fact that. Like John mentioned, OSHA has permissible exposure limits and levels, and I'm in a business that actually has to monitor that. In certain uses of our, our work, if he's not in a business that has to monitor that, it's an amazing thing. Because it's not easy to monitor and we do it all the time with our stainless steel. And so I sit and I look at it and I think to myself, we purposely did this so we would have that buffer. And now I'm right where, where we were trying to avoid when we bought the property in the year two thousand. On the other side note, you couldn't get a better company than Cornell. By far, they beat us, I would say, in all their actions that they do from a landscaping perspective. And, and how they treat their, their neighbors, we have tried to be very good to the town of Wellington, I think they'll be better than us. So I come from a perspective that I thought we were going to have a win-win when we had this. I thought we'd have two great companies in that industrial park that were good size, primary employers that would support the town. And I'm just sad that we have such a. Distance that we're working through at this point in time, so I hope that we can come to a good conclusion on this one, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clay. John Robertson.
Hey y'all, good evening, my name's John Robertson, we live at, in the Knowles, so. You know, Buffalo Creek, but kind of in the neighborhood. And, you know, I really appreciate the presentation, gave me a lot to think about. As our concerns were primarily, you know, about air and water quality, you know, we're really. My wife is eight months pregnant, we have a forty-year-old, you know, some of us have respiratory problems. So that's something, you know, it's an issue that's sort of near and dear to our hearts, and so. You know, I just wanted to co-sign the concern about potential water runoff issues. Yeah, I don't necessarily know enough to say whether that's going to be a big problem or not. But I didn't hear a lot about that, so I'd, I'd love to hear more. And, yeah, and I'll, you know, I'll come back for the air dispersal study, I think that'll be really interesting. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Risa Connie.
Hi. So just a couple of questions, more so than comments, I'm Risa Conry, I live in Buffalo Creek, as many others here do. I think in the presentation that Mr. Warren just gave, that he mentioned that the aggregate to be used comes from Carr. And the asphalt cement is coming from Cheyenne or other areas mostly to the north. Given that both the railroad and I twenty-five continue out of Wellington to the north, I'm curious as to why. This site was chosen in town adjacent to our neighborhoods and. Just north and just upwind of our new Wellington Community Park that. The town of Wellington invested a lot in, so I'm curious as to why an alternate site couldn't be chosen. And then I guess this is more of a question for the town planning board. I've been a little bit confused as to exactly what stage in the approval process we're in. Some of the comments early on from Mr. Wayland led me to believe that you guys had already given initial approval, but there were some, some issues like. Road improvements that were still being discussed, and there was some implication, I may be mistaken, but it seemed like there was some implication that. Because the land is zoned industrial and because this. Asphalt plant is a permitted industrial use that you guys almost didn't have any choice that. You know, if they, you know, dotted their i's and crossed their t's, that it was, you had to approve it, so maybe I'm mistaken about that. But I'd be curious as to how the approval works and exactly what stage in the process you guys are at. In terms of my concerns, I think it's the same as everybody else just listed, air quality, water, just the proximity to the park. I also have two children and. Yeah. The noise as well and the traffic, thank you.
Thank you, I think those comments we can definitely take care of tonight. Cody, was there another signup sheet? They're standing under. This is still for Cornell, okay. We've got about four more and then I think we'll take a short recess after the public comments, so if you guys can hang tight for a couple more. You guys, your names. Ben, Ben Listacow. Ben, hey, you know, I try. Floor is yours regardless.
Yeah, my name is Ben Listaco, I live in Wellington Point, and we reached out, my wife and I, to the EPA, the Colorado Air Pollution Control Division. And the Colorado Department of Health and Environment and other state and local agencies, and when we reached out to them, the consistent feedback that we got that there was. There's haps and toxic chemicals as part of this, and that's including that Mr. Warren said was benzene and toluene and formaldehyde. And these things are getting released into the air with that, and they have negative effects with cancer to skin irritants coming down with that. And so what we want to encourage your team or ask you on the planning board to do is. Approve this with conditions, right, we want that condition to be that they have to go back and apply the standard of four point oh three point two one part B. Where heavy industry producing and curating toxic chemicals needs a two thousand six hundred and forty foot setback, right? And so we want to go back to the adjustment board and get that setback limit so that we can review like what this looks like to the city park and to Wellington Point. And the other like larger areas around this and how that team works. I think there was also a call out that we would have that approval. With the emission dispersion modeling independent with that, and so I think those two conditions would let me and my wife feel more confident. Going forward with, with Wellington, so thank you all for your time and have a good Monday, I guess.
Thank you. Catherine Fulmer? Caitlin, sorry.
I have obviously some similar comments to some other people here, I live north on County Road Seven. And. My, one of my main concerns was, was why they didn't choose another site, they said they could get their aggregate from Carr. I don't know why a plant couldn't be made in Carr, be closer and more fuel efficient for their, for their business, and then. Building off of what the gentleman before me said as well, that the EPA's worst source model. Says that it. A hazardous material like asphalt should not be. Closer than three thousand meters and then that's the EPA, the additional. Things I read were from third parties like universities and things, but their numbers were closer to five thousand to be safe. So when we talk about being eight hundred feet or, or whatever meters or whatever they just, eight hundred was the variance. It seems a little too close for comfort. And I can sure see, a lot of people do agree with that. And there is literally like a million things on Google that. Back up that information as well. It's the EPA sources. Say that those numbers are correct and that there's additional. Universities and third-party studies that aren't impacted by government funding that are reliable as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brendan Gallagher.
Hello, I'll try to restrict this to things that nobody else has addressed. One quick question for Connel. In terms of numbers of trucks that will actually be rolling up and down sixty-six every day. It's hard for us to compute what your numbers are to direct impact. So if you could describe that, I think that would help us wrap our heads around it a little bit better. And then I'm just curious because nobody's addressed why we granted a variance for an additional. I think it was forty feet for the. Height before and then we bumped it up to seventy and that's almost double. And I'm just curious why. What the rationale was for granting the variance for the setback reduction and the increased height on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, again, apologize, Kenton Schwett.
Hi, I live on that side of Wellington, so. Little bit. Should. 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 Close. The new one, Wild Grass Lane. I don't know, the sage meadows. Yeah. Yeah. So I guess my question is to Connel of can we, I, I'm assuming your plant off of Harmony and I twenty-five is similar. Is that true? Me being completely ignorant to how, you know, these asphalt plants function and things like that. I guess I would ask if you wouldn't mind setting up a day for us come, the town to come and tour and see actually. What is being planned to build, be built, right? I know we're all pretty concerned about it, but I feel like. A lot of us have never been to one or seen what it's like or been around it. And I think it would be good to have an opportunity to do that. I'm good.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, that's everybody that signed up for public comment. If anybody walked in late. And wants to make a comment, I'll allow it quick. Otherwise, we do actually need a motion for recess. So if nobody else wants to come up to the podium. Can I get a motion for a ten-minute recess?
For a ten-minute recess. I second.
Roll call. Sorry.
Come on Patty, you got this. Commissioner Cholet. Yes. Moyer. Yes. Knack. Yes. White House.
Yes.
Sarter.
Yes, we'll see y'all back in ten minutes.
Eight, ten minutes is eight.
And or didn't get a chance to sign the comment sheet after this public comment closes officially tonight. This will be the last chance anyone gets to speak on this. More comments, questions, we'll have to go directly to staff at this point. So if anybody else wants to come up and say anything, now is the last chance. Okay, public comment is closed. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Cody to just address some, some really high level questions. Basically about procedures, planning commission versus board of adjustments, some things that explain why. This got to the point where it is right now. I think that might help clarify some of the questions later on. So go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Thank you Chairman Sarter. Thought it'd be good to come up here and speak from the podium. I am Cody Bird. I'm the town's planning director. There were some questions about the process procedures and review criteria for an asphalt plant. Sorry, it's hard to do this, so I'm going to speak this way, but. I'm trying so far away. We need a taller microphone. So thank you for the reminder. The, speaking to the, the processes that have taken place so far and I did hear some comments. One of the comments was that this feels like it's already been decided. The response was it's not been decided. The planning commission is considering these criteria tonight. I do want to reference many times in land use development, there are multiple procedures and multiple applications that have to go through. Before a site gets approval for, for construction operations. And I think that's, there is certainly some of that background and associated with this case. The applicant, Connel Resources, did apply for variances to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is a different authority than the Planning Commission is. In October of two thousand twenty-two was when that case was heard by the Board of Adjustments. The applicant had requested a variance to the height. Of a silo in the industrial zone district. The industri, the, the zone district standards has a maximum structure height of forty-five feet. And the applicant requested for that variance to go up to seventy feet to allow for just the silo. The stack associated with the operations of, of an asphalt plant. The Board of Adjustments did support that variance. They granted that approval. They did have conditions of approval associated with that. This planning commission is bound by the Board of Adjustments conditions of approval. So anything in, in the planning commission's site plan considerations can't be in conflict with. A requirement that the Board of Adjustments placed on that application. The, the height was approved for the variance only for the silo, not. Blanket across the whole site for any future building to be forty-five feet or more. It was limited to just that one structure could exceed forty-five feet up to seventy max. And that was satisfactory for the applicant to relocate that proposed silo. The other variance consideration by the Board of Adjustments was for a setback. From the property line and, or from a residential zone district, excuse me. The, the variance that was heard by the Board of Adjustment. Considered factors, including the timing of when these properties were originally annexed and zoned and approved for the uses on the site. That was a factor here in sense that the. The Board of Adjustments considered the timing of when the properties were originally approved. And when the regulation took, took effect and came into play. So one of their findings was that the. Uses established for the industrial zone district for this property were. Established or vested back in two thousand when that property was annexed and zoned industrial. The regulations with a thousand-foot separation came in two thousand twenty-two. Twenty-two years later, when the town adopted a new set of zoning criterion regulations with our land use code adoption updates. So the timing there was, the Board of Justices was looking at, we have a property zone industrial that's entitled. And a property zone residential, it's entitled and both those existed with no setbacks. How do you then hear an application for something when eighty percent of the site is. Impaired by that new setback regulation? So that was one of the justifications for the Board of Adjustments and approving that setback variance. Also want to speak to the. Site plan process for the planning commission. This step is usually the last step for a site before a building permit is, is issued or applied for. And in this case, this site plan was being presented first by the applicant. Because they don't know where they need to dedicate public right of way and public easements. The configuration of the site could be changed as a part of site plan review. And so they didn't want to. Plat the property and entitle the, the public dedications for roads, easements where utilities go. And then have to come back and vacate them and replat them because a site plan changed. So they've tried to be presenting, here's the big picture. This is the total site that we're presenting. And these are the conditions we're asking for to allow operation of that site. If that's approved, all the dedications would be made after that. Also wanted to point out, there were some comments about ongoing conversations. With Laramie County Engineering Road and Bridge Department. C dot was involved in some correspondence. Certainly town public improvements for water lines, sewer lines, roads. All of those factors are still being evaluated. Public improvements for road construction, pipe sizing, stormwater design. Are all engineering standards that are reviewed and approved by our engineering staff and other outside agencies as well. In that review of those, those engineering standards, the engineers make the final call on whether it meets the applicable engineering standards or not. So in the planning commission review of a site plan, you're looking at the criteria for approval. Identified the land use code and that's typically the site arrangement. Is there road connectivity? As opposed to what elevation are we building the road to? What's the pipe size? You're looking at, do all the lots have access to roads? Do all lots have sewer and water? Are they accounting for storm drainage? You're not considering the design of a stormwater ponds. That's an engineering function. Road segments for public improvements. County Road sixty-six is identified as an arterial roadway. There is some, still some ongoing conversations with Laramie County regarding how to handle. Portions of that road adjacent to the town and portions of that road that are adjacent to county properties. There's two sets of standards to address there. And so the applicant is going to have to comply with both depending on where they're at. So there's still some ongoing design considerations for that. Those are engineering details that will be decided by the engineers. The site plan for planning commission is related to the site arrangement. Architecture standards, what do the buildings look like, landscaping and screening. You do have the Board of Adjustments condition of the fifteen-foot berm with landscaping. As long as your approval is in alignment with that general requirement, then that would be reasonable to satisfy that condition. Any questions on site plan process, timing, other town procedures? I'm happy to come back up as needed if there's other questions or they come up, but I wanted to speak to those. First and hopefully that clarifies some of the, where we're at, what's happened and what's still in front of us.
I think you did so. Thank you, Mr. Bird.
Thank you.
We'll call you back up as needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren, I'll give you kind of the same latitude if you'd like to answer some of the questions that came up. Just kind of check off your list.
If, if I happen to miss one, don't, don't hesitate. But the, the first one I had was, was stormwater off of the site, the historical flow. And Cody isn't, there's, I know this might be a big ask. Is there any way to pull the site plan back up onto the?
I'll, I'll work on that. Give me a chance.
But it, it's the south, southwest corner of the property and, and what we have is we've graded the site to actually. We will detain up to what is, and Jill or Dan, you may have to, if I misspeak, please. Interrupt me here, but we have to detain any stormwater up to a ten-year event. Within ten-year event is defined as, as what would happen once every ten years. The receiving water or the receiving ditch is actually a North Pooter irrigation ditch, which runs the entire. West side of the property. And, and our agreement with North Pooter is that we actually have a head gate on our outlet structure that we have to keep closed. So anything, any water that comes in actually has to be built up. Until it would over top, which would be over a ten-year event. Now I mentioned also, the other part of that is we have. We don't have to have an SBC or spill containment and control plan for the asphalt plant, but we certainly do for the rest of the site. So any diesel fuel, any oils, any, any other things that we have on site, we have to have a plan. They have to be double contained, those type of things to not allow any of that to leave the site. So there is again, the stormwater detention pond in, in the lower, lower left or southwest corner. It'll hold all the water through a ten-year event. At that point, it would actually, hundred-year event? Oh, it is a hundred-year event. Okay, I apologize. That's why I need help. But the big thing with North Pooter is we're keeping the head gate closed. Will allow most of that water if, from events to, to sit in that detention pond. And they'll actually allow us to open it to run out, which would then go to Box Elder Creek. So there's a few fail safes within the plan. For stormwater. Does that answer your question? Okay. Cause I have very, two very intelligent engineers too. Let's see here. Traffic was, was one and, and timing and James was the one asking that. All of the improvements have to be complete before we would get a CO. So as we pave County Road sixty-six, as we do improvements to County Road. Seven and Owl Canyon, those improvements and the road paving or internal road paving will all have to be complete before we operate. So he was after the construction traffic, same thing will come in the same way. I mean, we obviously have to build the road, lay the asphalt on County Road sixty-six. But that process is done first before the plant is operational. Let's see here.
Mr. Warren, could I just explain one of the acronyms you used real quick? You've referenced CO, which stands for certificate of occupancy, meaning for the structures on the site. It complies with all applicable criteria before they're allowed to operate. Thank you.
Another question is why Wellington? It's a great question. I, I tried to answer that a little bit in the original pieces that we, we thought we were coming to a, to a piece of property. That it is in zoned industrial and, and had the right use for an asphalt plant. Now you ask, why don't we go to CAR? Well, CAR. It is a different. Weather environment in CAR, whether you believe it or not. I know it's windy in Wellington. It's nothing to what we see in CAR. Asphalt is also a perishable product. It's, it's, it's made at a, at two hundred and eighty to three hundred and twenty degrees. Depending on some variables, as asphalt cools, it hardens obviously and, and it's non usable anymore. So the farther we are from, from the end user, the more difficult that gets and with the environmental issues in CAR. Although it's only, I think sixteen miles, it does make a significant impact. And then one other point to that is. Because of issues like asphalt plants and other, other things, Weld County no longer permits. Asphalt plants or concrete plants in unincorporated Weld County. You have to be incorporated into a town in order to get a permit for these and Laramie County is the same way. Laramie County does not have an industrial use zone classification in unincorporated Laramie County. I, I think I'm speaking to that correctly. I know I'm right in Weld County. So that adds a real difficulty to permitting and outlying areas. Basically, the counties. Don't want to deal with this process. I'm speaking of my opinion completely here. There's no factual base to this, but that is. Really what they've gone to, to say, if you're going to do an industrial use facility, it has to be incorporated into. A town so that this public process takes place and is more transparent. And more established. So hopefully that answers that question. The twenty-six hundred foot setback that I, I'm going to, Cody, that, that's a question to the town. We certainly don't believe that we are producing any hazardous or toxic materials. We understand there's some of the materials that contain that, but we aren't producing that. We're simply taking an asphalt cement, which is a byproduct of the refining industry and mixing it with rocks. So we feel the thousand-foot designation was appropriate, but really that was a town decision. Is that fair, Cody?
I'll speak to that in just a moment.
Okay, I'll let you. I was asked to clarify on trucks, what, what a hundred and fifty thousand tons means. It means about fifty to sixty truck trips per day in and out of that plant. That, again, that's going to vary a bit on, on days. We, we have done, we have, as part of this process, we have to do traffic studies, which. Basically calls out what intersections can handle the, our, our added traffic versus what's there now and what is predicted in the future. This area is a little challenging because of the Owl Canyon being challenging because of the landfill coming and. And trying to incorporate that, but there are improvements to Owl Canyon coming through Laramie County that aren't associated with us. But we're going to do additional work on top of that to, to. Compensate for the impact that we're putting on the roads in essence. So we do have to, it's a pay to play. I guess scenario where we have to do a study. And then we have to build the road and improvements to match what we're, we're impacting on the roads. To that point. Our traffic study actually didn't require us to pave. Our traffic study actually didn't require us to pave. The portion of county road sixty-six between the BNSF railroad and county road seven. We're doing that on our own accord. It's the right thing to do. It only makes sense. So. It's, it's an engineering and a study function as well. And to the question of whether we do a plant tour or set up and do an asphalt one-on-one type of class, I'd be happy to do it. We have. We can work through and figure out a way to do that. I, I assure you, I've reached out to Buffalo Creek. Before and, and was told there really wasn't a, a want to meet. Um but if that has changed and your group wants to meet with us and. Do an asphalt one-on-one and come see the plant, happy to do it and explain how the whole process works and, and what we're doing. Happy to do it. So. I think those are the questions I had written down. Did I miss any, Jill? Okay. Cody, do you have anything else that was on your notes?
Maybe let me get to them. Maybe one of the questions that I had noted was, and speak to this from, from an applicant and operator's perspective. But the question was, what happens if there's concerns after the plant is opened? And what happens if there's impacts that weren't anticipated after plant is open?
I mean, that's what I, I can tell you, that's what the Laramie County Health Department's for. They hold us to a high standard. You can, the, the fines are significant, I, I guess, through, through CDPH and Laramie County. If, if we don't comply with our standards or don't, or don't do what we say we're going to do from a plant permit side of things. It's, there, there is an absolute financial penalty to that. So.
I think that was the only one that I had noted that you didn't, didn't cover.
Can I answer any else while I'm here? I can get up too. It's not a long walk.
Possibly, Mr. Warren. I think we're good for now. Um I do want to have Leah Schneider come up as well. She's sort of the. Laramie County Health, and then if anything kind of spurs from, from that, we'll kind of get back into some more questions that you can answer.
Hello commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm Leah Schneider. I'm the environmental health planner for the Laramie County Health Department. And I heard some new things today that I'm very excited about, um which I do have a question on process. Um I've heard the air dispersion modeling will be completed. Now, and you said that we still have like a second round of referral. I'm new to this process. This was my first time commenting. And always feel free to reach out to the Health Department. We, we love to provide comments to improve um where we can. But I am curious with this next round and writing up conditions of approval such as the air dispersion modeling requirement. Is that something we can help you write the wording for, or I'll have an opportunity maybe to comment on that?
I think just from a town staff perspective, we would welcome an opportunity for, for some, for some input on the, the wording for that. Um for the planning commissioners, as part of your consideration, um if that is a condition of approval you want to include. You can certainly work that into the motion if it's not already um identified in the staff report as a recommended condition.
What would the timeframe on that be? How quickly could the actual testing be done?
Oh, the testing will take some time. Um again, we need the asphalt plant, um because it sounds like we're going to do characterization emissions, um or. Evaluation of their existing plant and actually evaluate their current emissions, which is also a, um, which will be similar to the plant going out in Wellington. So, and they're not at their high production because it is winter and they usually need the summer. It's probably spring to start up and summer to actually get good emissions testing.
So maybe to add to your follow-ups, Mr. Warren, the timing of your proposal for timelines for construction. Timelines for testing and modeling.
Okay, well, um I did want to bring up, um you know, because this is, this is a, a big part. Um air dispersion modeling is not always required at the state health department level when they're evaluating these permits for air pollution sources. Um they really, it, it, they have to do, applicants have to go through a model determination application. And that's really just to look at criteria pollutants from the EPA's National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And that includes things like particulate matter, oxides of nitrogen, um oxides of sulfur, volatile organic compounds and carbon monoxide. But it doesn't include hazardous air pollutants and other air toxics. So this air dispersion modeling and um doing some emissions characterization with the existing site will be a huge benefit. And outside of permitting requirements of Air Pollution Control Division. Um so, and I, I just want to kind of share a little bit of an experience with um the commission and the residents. Um Laramie County Health Department had a concern with another large operating asphalt plant. Uh in unincorporated Laramie County but adjacent to Fort Collins. And this plant back in two thousand and eleven originally started off as a portable. And when you convert from a portable to a permanent stationary source, you have to go through air permitting again. So it opened it up to public comment. Um the air pollution, well, let's see, Laramie County Health, um the County Environmental Science Advisory Board and the City of Fort Collins Air Quality. Um air quality advisory board all got together. We brought in a consultant to help us understand the permitting and to understand. Um based on what the permit had, what the public health impacts would be to the residents in that area and we. Cause we had residents within close proximity and we had recreation areas and we were concerned about the same. Um pollutants that your public is bringing up as well, your community here in Wellington. And that includes air toxics because it's really understudied and we don't have regulations unless you're over ten tons per. Air toxic basically. So formaldehyde, if you were an industry producing ten tons per year as an emission, then you would be looked at as a major source. For now, it's two hundred and fifty pounds and you just have to report your emissions on a regular basis with Air Pollution Control Division. So we had those concerns too. So we hired a consultant to evaluate um the air mod modeling that was conducted for this site. They were doing five hundred thousand tons per year throughput, which is a little more significant compared to the three hundred thousand tons that. Connell is proposing and what their current um air pollution control the permit has. Um so we asked the consultant to analyze the modeling results and. The potential air toxics impacts on public health and the environment and the analysis came back. They determined that half emissions from the highest worst case asphalt plant operations would not cause. Ambient concentrations um that would exceed the concentrations per EPA data as well as California reference exposure levels. And that includes things like formaldehyde, benzene, acetylene, um trying to go through all. And if you need like an example for quick reference, we were looking at for like a one hour average hazardous air pollutant exposure. Um the, the accepted concentration would be fifty-five and at our nearest residential receptor, which was near our trailhead. Um on the Pooter Trail, uh we ended up with a thirty-six micrograms per cubic meter measurement and fifty-five. Is the acceptable level. So that's just one. And then for an annual level, we had the annual safe concentration threshold is thirteen. And based on the modeling done by our consultant, um formaldehyde came in at point four nine at our closest receptor, which. Um I have that as seven hundred and eighty-four feet from the asphalt towers to the house. So, and we're welcome to share more of that and talk. Again, each asphalt plant is very individual. Um it depends on their throughput, what kind of controls they have in place, like a vapor condenser unit, like capture all the VOCs. Yeah, which includes caps. Um and capture that and either burn it in a combustor of a certain percentage or just some type of recovery system. I mean, there's so many things that we could do. So this air dispersion modeling using emissions from the existing facility will be a huge asset. To really evaluate what needs to be done to make sure that our um community is protected in the, um, in the event this is approved. Um and the noise evaluation as well. We are happy to help. We have um noise certified staff and we have uh noise meters and. Um are looking forward to the contour mapping that was um proposed and appreciate the white noise backup beepers. Um a lot of the site conditions with the brooms were really helpful, the one-way float direction, which helps reduce those high pitch alarms. But the white noise backup beepers um are great. It just, it just sounds like that. Um at a much louder level. Um and then uh, what was, I would, something else I really wanted. Um but we do currently inspect the Connell facility out at Timnith. Uh my staff have been there quite a few times. Um one of our staff is retired though, so I only have one that has experience now. Um and again, the location there, they're along I twenty-five, the residents there are pretty far. Um this is a site that could potentially have a development immediately to the west. So again, this air dispersion modeling is going to be a big key for impacts on the community. Um do you guys have any specific questions that you'd like?
How far was the plant that you were um giving data from, from that trailhead that you were discussing?
Oh, that was the seven hundred and eighty. Seven hundred and eighty-four feet or two hundred and thirty-nine meters. And then we also have uh farther distances of two thousand and thirty-seven hundred feet. That we wanted measured as part of this consultant analysis.
I assume the further away you get, the lower those numbers.
Yes, yes, you're, you're assuming correctly.
Yeah, everything you're reading off, is that part of the packet notes or are those your, your presentation notes or your?
These are my own notes and materials that we have as a health department.
Is that something the town might be able to utilize and uh put on a website if that might provide some information for? People if that's, not if that's the right way to go or not, just a thought.
Turn it into a public document, basically.
I'd have to ask too. I'd have to ask my people, my attorneys, so the county attorneys, and then we can find out. If we can release it, you can post it.
Yeah, let us do some, some staff to staff coordination on that and we'll see what, what's available and what we can post and what it might look like. In terms of format to be posted, but we'll certainly follow up with, with Ms. Schneider on that.
I was going to suggest it also needs to be in some form. I've read some engineering reports which are. Really thick and I'm not sure they provided me any greater information. Cause I couldn't understand it. It was too technical. So if this is, it falls into that realm, maybe that is not inappropriate. If it's not open to a layman or understandable by a layman.
We could condense it maybe and make it and I use it, I could translate and.
Uh yeah, yeah, comment, um Commissioner Whitehouse understood. Um we also have a, an in-house Wellington communications. Professional who can help us with what the content looks like, so it's not posted a two hundred page engineering document.
We, we had our consultants come and present to us and our various environmental boards as well, so we can understand.
Board have any other questions for Leah while she's up here?
So I was looking through your report and it mentions wetlands and it says no information was noted in the application materials. But it sounds like there seems to be an inference that there may be wetlands on this property. Is that the, is?
We. Yeah, there's, um, we just use this, um, uh, the uh national wildlife. Um I, I have it listed there, the US Fish and Wildlife, and they identify that as a potential wetland. But it's really the Army Corps that would have to evaluate it further to um see if it's uh waters of jurisdictional concern. If it's connected to other water bodies, things like that. So I wasn't sure because again, I was new on this and I wasn't sure if you guys had already. Started to evaluate any of that.
And, oh, I can, while they were on that topic, I'll speak to it real quickly and then um Connell and team might want to follow up on it as well. But the, the area that was identified on the, the county's uh comments for wetlands is a North Pooter ditch lateral. Um and so we, we would, you know, refer back to the applicants on whether or not they've communicated with North Pooter on that uh particular ditch lateral.
I think the only, in my notes, the only comment that maybe didn't get spoken to was the property values. I don't know that that's anything any of us can speak to right now, aside maybe for Mr. Warren. Probably not. Yeah, no, it's understandable. I, I understand. Um just noting that that one was not, that one was the only one we haven't really covered, I think. Um is that something staff could even begin to look into?
A lot of planners all over the country have tried to tackle that and I've not read a single white paper on it that was definitive, but. We can take a stab at it again.
Okay.
I was going to refer back to while Ms. Schneider is up here. Um and I, I hear that there weren't any further questions, but it seemed, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I don't want to step on toes. I just want to take advantage of her expertise while she's here at the podium.
I'm not sure if this is you or not, but one of the questions that I have, well, I have a lot of questions that stem around this issue. But the truck traffic, right? Because I sat through the landfill meeting, so the question was asked about how many trucks. Would be going the Owl Canyon route versus. God forbid, through town. Um and now we're talking about more traffic on Owl Canyon, right? And so my question is, is there something that the Department of Health, Laramie County Department of Health? Does to regulate how much increased truck emission we're going to have, because by my best. Guessimate right now, we're talking about. When Connell is running over a hundred and twenty trucks per day or more. And what environmental impacts that's going to have on. The people north and then of course the wind always blows out of the north, so then here as well.
You know, I, I do remember when we were making comments for the landfill and it's been a bit. It's hard because vehicle emissions are regulated by yet another entity because they're mobile emissions and um the EPA regulates more. Engine design to be efficient. Um so I remember when we were commenting with the landfill, because they, at the time, I think they were evaluating it as forty trucks. Would that would be moving back and forth, which could end up being eighty trips total, like, you know, if you count each one individually. Um so we were asking for them to evaluate emissions um based on that, like how much more is that going to contribute? Because as you know, Laramie County is in non attainment, only portions, which surprisingly you are attainment. Right where Connell and up is so, but the south of us are all in non attainment for ozone. And we're worried about NOx emissions um and how they will contribute to ozone formation in our warmer months. So we were asking the landfill um consultants to evaluate some of that and I don't have any information at this time though on that. But it is a good question. Um a cumu- cumulative impact assessment of some sort could be done. But we'd probably have to involve all parties to evaluate further, but for this low of number, I can't imagine. We've looked at. Emissions for over two hundred trips per day in that type of situation. And when you have over two hundred, you start to get into our air quality regulations.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Um and kind of to a comment that someone else had made about that we don't, none of us live in Buffalo Creek. My front window looks at the highway on I twenty-five, so all the extra trucks going up and down the highway don't exactly. You know, make me happy, but at the same time, so I just, I have some concerns about how much we're adding to the problem.
Transportation is our primary contributor here in Laramie County for our ozone non attainment status because of NOx emissions from vehicles.
I would maybe comment that we're not adding these trucks, we're relocating these trucks. Yep, it's just an aerial relocation. These are already running. They've already been running for how many years? So yes, there are a problem now, we understand, but it's not like we're cumulatively adding emissions per se.
Our airhead is all the same.
Truck trips, yes, but was still contained within Laramie County. These trucks were already running anyway. Just. Something to note.
One more thing on trucks. Um what Mr. Waldo had asked about the Jake brakes, he said in what he read, they were only going to be required. Westbound and not eastbound. Is there some clarification on that? I think I'm getting that comment correct.
I, I heard that as well and I think we'll, we'll definitely work with Laramie County and with the applicant to have that posted in both directions. I don't think that would be a concern.
Not a big deal. Okay.
Well, it's a good clarification. We'll definitely take note of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bird.
I, I did have one question for Ms. Schneider uh while you're up there and it was with regards to the, the odors in the nasal ranger. Um which is a fantastic name for a device. But the, the question I was gonna ask, I think this came out of the applicant's presentation. Would there be, do, do those tools have the sophistication to detect? Differences between natural gas odors versus asphalt odors versus ag operations or dairy odors?
Sure, it's, um, it's more in the process of how we evaluate an odor because we have to, we do have to go upwind, downwind, all around the site. And evaluate odors so that we can eliminate other sources. It's very common because, you know, landfill odors and ag, ag is exempt. So, but we still have to figure out whether that's the contributing odor for the receptor. So we have to do a whole site perimeter. You have to be able to get a couple of different odor readings per hour. And you know, there's specifics in air quality regulations that we follow.
Thank you. That's helpful.
I don't know if this is you again, but was an environmental impact study done on this? In this process yet?
Town staff is not required an environmental impact study.
I have a question and I'm not sure, again, this is out of the Laramie County Health Departments. But I was curious to know if there's, there's obviously detention pond which will take the drainage off the site. And allow it, release it at historical flows. Question, is there anything for, is there? I'm not sure what's going to be collected in the water. Is there any concerns about? That water would need to be some form of treatment prior to it leaving the site and being, going back into the ditch or where it might need to go?
Sure, there's, um, you have your basic stormwater control. Which they will have to have with the detention pond as well, but if they're discharging any of their, which a detention pod usually eventually discharges. With, it depends, the state health department also issues permits on operating stormwater discharge. So there might be levels that they have to evaluate of that water. That stormwater runoff so that when it is discharging, say into that canal, that it's meeting certain parameters that are also set in state statute on water quality. And those I won't know for sure because I'm not familiar with the, the whole process at the existing Connell and then how stormwater wasn't really just. Reviewed too much when I was doing my referral, but I wanted to make sure I had that in there. As it is a requirement once they're operating, if they discharge stormwater. Cause I saw a truck washing too, and I didn't know if that was being collected on site or, you know, in the public sewer that's on site or. Is it, is it in public sewer when it's full wastewater? The truck wash?
Well, I think the consultant team can speak to that and what their proposed plan is.
Yeah, some have collection bins on site and they use it for other things too, so.
Is that something you can comment on right away? Yeah, Mr. Warren, if you would please. Step up. We'll just kind of knock these off as we go if we can.
So I, I've got multiple things that I wrote down here as well. The truck wash side of it. The initial plan was to go into the, the municipal sewer with that. That looks like that's not going to be allowed, which would mean we will not have a truck wash there. So that would be deleted from, that's why that's an easy one to answer. Cause we'd go through a sand oil separator into the domestic sewer like a, a common car wash and recycle some of that water. Um, but it sounds like that's not going to be an allowed use in Wellington. Um, so that was just a proposed use, so that will go away. The wetlands issue. I can speak with almost certainty, there's no wetlands on this site. The wetlands that are, it, it actually comes off of an old lateral from. The Waldo property, which has not been in use for. I'm looking at the clays, but it's probably been twenty years, but there is no. It's a. It's. It's, yep, it's pretty, uh, pretty poor shape as far as the vegetation goes. Let's see. To your truck traffic point, by us actually moving closer to our aggregate source, we're actually gonna have less trucks on the road, if you can believe that. Because we won't be hauling aggregate down from Carr to Timnith and then back up to sources north. We'll be coming all south, so we actually have to do for C dot when we do a C dot pave project, what's called an EPD, which is an. Environmental Product Data Sheet and our scores for those improve the closer we are to our source, meaning we have less impact. So I believe this site will actually drop our overall truck traffic versus what it would be today. We're still working on that, but that is my belief. And then timing for the modeling, we have a signed contract with an environmental engineering firm. To start the modeling as soon as we get into production, so our goal is to have that done by June. Um, end of June of this year, so for the dispersion modeling.
And your timeline for operating?
For operating in Wellington is, would be two years from right now. April of twenty-five. Commissioners, any other questions? Questions or discussion? Okay, if they're pertinent to Mr. Warren.
So do you have a plan for? Material spills that are on the roadways outside of your site in terms of cleanup? Is that in this? Whole, uh, site, well, it's not just the site plan, but the whole development. Process, a plan for responsibility for if there are spills outside of the site on our roadways? Or is that something that the county and the town would then be responsible for cleaning up?
The county and the town, we would be responsible for it ourselves, but there is, is there a plan for it? I, I can't say that we have a specific plan other than. We're responsible for what we have in, in our trucks. That's a DOT standard. Versus, because we're all, these are all commercial motor vehicles, so it all falls within, under a commercial motor vehicle. Rules and regulations versus even a town or. County standard.
Okay. And do, is there a remediation plan and are we requiring a remediation plan for if and when they're done using the site?
We haven't had any discussions on that. Perhaps Mr. Warren could speak to the, the intent of the operations on this site in terms of your overall company profile?
I mean, the intent is we're gonna own the site and so if we do anything, we're gonna own that as well. If you're familiar with. With EPA requirements on cleanups, it's, it's a cradle to grave requirement. We can't just walk away from it. But there is no remediation plan because we have nothing to remediate at this time.
Well, I'm, I'm. So it's not unusual for industrial type things, but I'm thinking of the bigger concern is. We look down Cleveland, we have several properties that have been available and are vacant. And they aren't purchased or built upon on our main street. Because there wasn't remediation for previous uses with previous owners. And so at some point in the future, you may choose not to use that site anymore. And whether it's during my lifetime or someone else's lifetime. I would like to think that there's a plan in place that holds you accountable and responsible for. That site when you, if and when you choose to leave. I think that's being responsible and a little future thinking, which is something that I think is important when we're talking about things like this.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have an answer for it. I'd have to do some research on that and, and find. What, what that means, because again, we'd still own the property. And, and I know, I, I completely understand your point. Just trying to envision what that looks like and what that is.
Ready for another one?
Sure.
Okay. So, and Cody, you may have to answer a little bit of this. So I feel like I got a little bit of different, maybe different information from one presentation versus what was in the packet, but generally the same. Which is that your expected operating hours during your operating season, so to speak, is? Seven AM to six or seven PM, Monday through Saturday?
Correct.
Okay, and I had asked a question about noise ordinance, which we don't have one. Laramie County has one. Staff's response was that Laramie County would enforce that. But the, something I read said that actually would. Because we don't have one, would go back to the Colorado Revised Statute Noise Ordinance, which I'm not sure what that is. And would Laramie County even think to enforce noise ordinance within our own town? Because that would be outside of the unincorporated Laramie County area.
I'll, I'll start off by explaining, um, the town does not have a noise ordinance that defines a decibel level for different types of uses or different types of areas. Um, and our understanding from, um, the referral comments provided by Laramie County, uh, Health, Department of Health and Environment, Leah Schneider's comments. That the county does have those standards and it limits it to fifty-five decibels. Um, at the property line, then the indication we understood was that that would continue to be enforced by Laramie County Health as part of an operating permit for. For an asphalt plant.
Okay.
Did I misstate any of that, Ms. Schneider?
But if we had concerns when we were on site, say doing other evaluations, we could use the Colorado Revised Statutes for noise. And refer to that rather than our county ordinance.
And are those as stringent as Laramie Counties?
Yes, it's the same noise levels, um, the same residential is protected with the fifty and fifty-five.
Okay. And then, um, on that same subject in. The submittal information that we got in our packet. It was actually talking about lights ironically, but it said you needed lights for safety in case of nighttime. Operating, so. How often, if your prime times are when there's a lot of sunlight, I would assume the sun is still up while you're normally operating. So how often would you be operating at night and? Then you would be outside the noise ordinance limits. Because this, that's provided to be only seven AM to seven PM based on Laramie County standards. So what is your plan for that? Is that something that you would give notice? So that the town and the residents nearby know that you're operating outside your normal hours because you have a big highway project, which we all live through all the time, so we know that's definitely a possibility.
I, I think that's, that's what's left to. You know, we, if, I, I kind of look at that as two questions. We need the lights for daylight savings times and the winter times when we are, are, say our truck drivers are out doing inspections. Prior to startup, so they're walk around and it's still dark at seven AM. Um, and dark at four thirty in the afternoon, so there's that. Um, as far as nighttime operations go for running the plant. Last year we ran six nights total and the only nights we were required is if it's a C dot project, City of Fort Collins project. Notice is certainly a reasonable aspect to me of how, how we do that. There, there are some jobs that are just I twenty-five, for example, I mean, there's primarily night work. We don't like doing it either. Quite frankly, and try to avoid it at all costs, but. It, it does happen and I think coming up with a proper notification and, and who we go through for that would be the right way to do it. So that we can function. And, and put limits to that and we're open to those. Cause the intent is certainly not to run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that type of thing. It's not at all.
And Chairman, I just wanted to speak to, the, the question came up in the context of lighting. Is, was that how I understood it?
That's where I got the hours of operation where it said night operations and so then I was kind of. Putting it all together and that's where the question was generated from.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. I, I guess I, I took it as some of the lighting impacts and I wanted to at least.
Oh, no, I'm all for safety and I, I think the lighting was well within the.
And that, that's what I was gonna bring up was that, you know, and I don't know that we really spent a lot of time talking about that, but since it came up, I wanted to speak to. The town's site plan process, we do require a photometric plan. The applicant has provided that and we've evaluated the photometrics from the lighting plan proposed. It does satisfy the town requirements for minimum and maximum illuminations at property levels. Fixtures that were, uh, included in that plan are full cutoffs, meaning, um, they're downward directed, they're not. Globe lights or broadcast lights, um, and so it satisfied the town's criteria for our lighting standards. And the fifteen foot berms would also have a, an impact in, in limiting the amount of light dispersion off the property. So th- those are certainly things that if there's a specific concern with lighting, um, there's some, some context in your site plan requirement criteria to, to mitigate potential light impacts. Thank you.
Let's keep it very tight on the site plan. If it, if you don't feel like it's gonna influence your vote, then. I just, I do want to get to our discussion and try to get to an end here. So, yeah.
Well, I mean, my questions will all influence my vote, so.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
So I want to know if it's possible if the town can be, um, a third party notifier on all. Testing for compliance for all the different regulations and licenses, licenses, so that we know if and when there are any issues or. That you're always in compliance, either way.
Certainly no issue there and. I'd have to ask, but I mean, CDPHE inspection records are, they're public documents, so.
I just think that rather than putting the onus on the town to seek those out, I would just prefer that the town is just. Um, included as a thirty, third party notifier, sure.
And, and that was one of the conditions, recommended conditions of approval in the staff report was to, and to have the applicant provide satisfaction of all applicable state, county and, and federal. Permit requirements, ongoing operating procedures. The operators of that site would have to provide that to staff and certify that they continue to maintain good standing with the state. That, those were recommendations in our staff report. And I think you're acknowledging that is what.
I am. I think that there's actually a process where there, the onus isn't even on them, that that actually is given to us by the, the State Department of Health or. Whatever inspecting, um, organizations that there are, they will provide that third party. Uh, reporting if you request it.
Yeah, I don't know that. I'll inquire and see if that's an option, kind of like a certificate holder for insurance, something of that nature. We'll, we'll check into that and see what we can find.
And I don't know if you can speak to this or maybe Cody. Um, is there a heightened risk with the onsite fuel storage and the secure, the Sinclair fuel line that runs underneath that property? Which I know isn't your fault, but it's there, but it's there.
You're talking about the onsite fuel storage or the, the specifically the Sinclair pipeline?
The two combined on one property. I'm just wondering if there's an increased risk of having both of those on that same site or not at all?
I, I would tell you, no, the Sinclair pipeline actually runs diesel fuel and unleaded fuel. At a significant rate, like twenty-five thousand barrels a day. So. We're gonna protect that. Put it that way. They are allowing us to pay vote. I mean, that's part of our configuration of our haul roads is to pave. The easement of the Sinclair line to protect it further through our operations. And they have given us a, an initial approval that that is okay. They do fly that line once a week. To look for leaks and those type of things, so, um, we do have to gate both ends of that easement, so they have access through the property. And they're diligent, that's all I can say. But no, our, our diesel storage and that line are completely separate and very isolated from one another.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
And just from the town's staff perspective, um, and I, I pulled up the PowerPoint presentation once again for the, the site plan, but just to reference the. Sinclair, um, pipeline runs diagonally through the site and you can see that's where. As part of the site plan was including paving over directly over the top of that to protect that line. And some, and Mr. Warren, you could speak more to your operations, but the intent was that in areas of heavy operation, it was protected with asphalt pavement, so it's not. Subject to being, uh, over excavated, um, by equipment operating there.
That's correct.
This is a real easy one. Do you use recycled asphalt road base at all in your operations?
We use recycled asphalt, yes, and making new asphalt, absolutely.
Okay, cause then that still retains the chemical composition from the first process. Does that increase what your? What's the word I'm looking for?
That reduces the.
Your pollution? I don't mean pollution, but.
It, it does not. It acts as very similar as an aggregate. It's an aggregate. Again, the, the burner does not reach, the wrap is added, which we call wrap recycled asphalt pavement. It is added after the oil is mixed to the aggregate. It's actually the last stage. Is mixed to the aggregate, it's actually the last stage of of addition to it, so no, it doesn't, but it does reduce how much new oil that we have to bring in. And mix in the asphalt, so it reduces the amount. Um, of asphalt cement that is added to the mix, so it's asphalt's a hundred percent recyclable.
Okay. Um. What happens if this dispersion model shows that you can't comply with the standards?
It's a great question, I don't know until we see the dispersion model, but I think our intent is is to work with the county and the town. To modify our plant in order and, you know, use new technologies if need be to get it to where it does meet that. Um, but it's a difficult question to answer cuz we don't know the data yet. Um, we don't think we're gonna have an issue, we've been able to pass. All, you know, all other air quality permits and and requirements to date. Um. And and listening to Leah and her, what she just talked about the Martin Marata plant and that we run at a, you know, lower volume. Um, and we're gonna be upgrading this plant when it comes to Wellington, I'm I'm fairly confident we're not going to have that issue, but. Um, there are certain. Again, we have recapture devices on top of our silos to help with those things, there's, there's. Multiple things we can do to to continue to, you know. Bring down our emissions and and we're continuing to do that and the state's quite frankly requiring us to do that.
Okay. Last question.
I won't hold you to it.
Thank you. I don't think I'm asking bad questions. Um. What is the possibility of you being open to um? Groundwater monitoring wells?
I mean. Yeah, I would I would wonder why and what, again, I'd have like to have a little more discussion on that of what what. Where where is that source coming from, where is that required elsewhere by us? Um, and that, at the same time, I also don't see a lot of issue with it.
Right, well.
Multiple burdensome more and more burdens being placed on us and and why?
Because I want to protect the groundwater in Wellington.
Understood.
Right, and I'm look, I'm considering the discussion items that were. Brought to my attention, my own research, my mo- my own experience, having worked in construction for thirty years and. Understanding that there could be sediment from runoff and things like that, if there. It's an opportunity to ensure and. That everything is good and protect my community members.
Right. They have a baseline, but I I mean, I'd be open to the discussion for sure.
Okay.
It's just some of the who's and what's and where's and how often's, I think, need to be part of that discussion.
I understand.
Alright guys. Anything else for Mr. Warren who's up here, anything else for Cody, anything else for Leah? If not, we will close the question portion and just bring it back to the board for some. Discussion up here, some deliberation and try to get onto a vote on this tonight. Anybody wanna start, where are we at? No one wants to start, I'll start. So I guess. There's a, there's a lot of information, no question about it, I think my the biggest shock from tonight that I took away is. Everyone that spoke public comment tonight, and thank you for keeping it brief and respectful, I really do appreciate that, we all do. Um, that could have gone differently. They are vastly different than the public comment we received online. As far as multitude and concerns. I don't know how to, how to reconcile this. The people that decided to comment online that didn't show up and reinforce their comments tonight. Could, um, basically citing comments and concerns about things that really didn't get mentioned with you folks that showed up here tonight. So, I guess to address the the emailed comments, Cody, is there? Is there anything else that we can make public record and public comment to ease some of this? This this was very centered, this was a lot of pollutions, air, volatile chemicals. Things of that nature, and that honestly, that really didn't get brought up, brought up. In the public comment tonight, but I feel like it's probably our due diligence to do a little bit more answering of these questions.
Um, respectfully, Chairman Carter, I disagree. I think that I heard a lot of the concerns that were brought up in the emails from people tonight. Um, there were proportionately the same amount of people speaking out in favor of it as the three emails that we received in favor of it. Versus the number of comments that we heard that voiced strong concerns. Um, and I'm not saying that one is right and the other is wrong, I just would like to acknowledge that I I personally, and this is perspective. Did hear um, the same concerns brought up that were brought up in the emails.
So do you feel there's enough information on public record given between staff and? The applicant to feel comfortable voting one way or the other and that all of these concerns, public or written, have been addressed?
No, I feel like there is absolutely not enough information at this time. And I would question whether or not it would be possible if we redacted the names to. Put these as public so that we don't have to sit here and read through them, but other, you know, they could be made public comment. I don't know if that's allowed.
I mean, then it's not a, they didn't make it into the agenda packet because the comments received were were received after the agenda was already published. And that's why you got them as a supplement. Um, they're certainly available as part of a a public record request, if someone requested, there'd be no reason for us to withhold it. Um, it's not our standard practice to publish those, but I can certainly talk with our communications folks and our town administrator on what best practice would be for that.
And I don't know that it's necessary, I just think to your question, you know?
Yeah.
Um, how much of this do we want people to know, I mean, it's the same again. In my opinion, um, the same types of concerns and then support of, so. I'm not sure that it's necessary, but if that's a question.
Considering this is the last stop for a site plan review, which it is, this. Just so all of you know, this does not go to the Board of Trustees, the planning commission is the final stop for a site plan review. I would be remiss if we didn't get all. All of the information, all the health and safety information that people are voicing concerns about out for public record. So that they can be addressed, so that everybody's got the same opportunity to look at the same research that. The applicant has done, the town has done, that Laramo County Health has done. And make that public possibly in a packet for the April meeting, if that's the direction this goes. And also give staff some time to do a little bit more research on some of the issues that were brought up tonight.
I would feel more comfortable with that, um, I'm not comfortable, just to be honest, making a decision at this time based on the information that we have. I would love to see, and um, I know you are contracted with the engineer for the. Um, air quality dispersion model, I'd like to see the emissions characterization, um, cumulative impact assessment. Information on the storm water, there's a wildlife preserve, I'm very concerned with the environmental impacts. Um, and then I do, I hear the people who talk in support of how genuine and. Um, honest you are and the company is, um, and I do hear that. However, I like data and hard facts and answers, so I would love to see this information. Um. In data form.
Well, this is, I've I've sat up in this chair for five years and uh. I have never seen so many referrals uh, from Burlington Northern, San Francisco, C dot, Buddha Valley REA. Laramo County Department of Health and Environment, Wellington Fire Protection District. Laramo County Engineers, I mean, this goes on and on, this is quite a. This is a quite a bit of input and uh, and there is a lot to consider here and. I myself personally, uh, I had some, some questions, I think I feel I know a little bit more. But I don't feel personally at this time that I would make a move to vote on this at this time. I think we should do a little bit more due diligence and see, just I I think that's only reasonable.
More or less the consensus.
Yeah, I, you know, I, and I'm getting, you know, we got the emails, getting ready to come to our meeting tonight, got more comments and. It it was hard to actually dissect all of these, you know, emailed comments right now. So that that was definitely part of my concern, kind of dissecting that and having a little time. You know, we are, we are missing a very valuable commissioner too, tonight. Um, if he um, would want to kind of get caught up on some of this information as well.
So along those lines, um, we need to give staff some direction, obviously, what they need to research. Um, what's realistic to do in the next thirty days? And what's not, some of this may not be, and you know, some of the uh. You know, the environmental testing obviously is not gonna happen until the plants open. That's something we'll have to consider at a later time, but would. I guess realistically, Cody, listening to the comments, what can you put together in the next thirty days, can we gather more health and safety information? Are there more sources out there we can cite? Um, can maybe Laramo County help clarify some of the data that Leah gave in the presentation? Is any of that realistic to do by the April meeting?
Can I ask a question really quick? Um, and I think Lisa had something to ask too and add to that. I don't know that we need to give ourselves thirty days if that's unreasonable for the kind of information that we're asking. I mean, are we under? Do we have to bring it back to the next meeting, or can we give reasonable allotment of time in order to gather all of the information that?
Going to appear in a public document for another planning commission meeting, it will have to be April. So if the idea is to get this out into the public so everybody can have the same information that we have. Then it appears in a, a basically a planning commission packet, so that goes to April, correct?
I'm wrestling with the timelines, um. The 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 type of, it depends on the on the ask and the request for what you're looking to see. Um. You know, you you think about the April meeting, the packet goes out before that and information has to be received, digested and prepared in that staff report to. To forward it on. Um, oftentimes that turnaround time is not really palatable for staff to meet that deadline when we've got other things that we're evaluating, working on too. This is kind of like a new ask, especially since.
Right.
Our town staff doesn't, we're not chemists, we're not health officials, I mean, this is a subject matter that we don't have in-house expertise on. And so I don't know that it would be realistic to expect a quick turnaround on on this detailed type of information.
So we should clarify what exactly we're asking staff to do that.
That would.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That's kind of a happy medium between what you initially suggested and what you're saying is, I know, like, I. Honestly, you guys, I have like a thousand questions and some of it I can do my own research on. And just so you guys know, like, we get all of this, we got it on Thursday, which is actually earlier than we usually do. And like, I can't even tell you how long I spent reading all this and trying to read the emails. Like Linda said, in like the second batch, I never even got to read because I was trying to listen and take notes and write more questions, so. I would wonder if, like, for me, there are certain conditions that I would like to be able to explore. And work through to decide whether or not that would be part of the process. And I don't feel like we can do that without it being all of us, is it not possible to have this? Be on the April agenda as a work session with whatever information we've asked for from the staff. So that we have a more clear direction on where we're leaning and what we may ask for if we're going to approve the site plan.
I think to Cody's point, same deal, is thirty days enough to gather the information and what are we asking him to do?
And and I'd also point out that we don't typically do work sessions on an application, that's, this is their, this is an applicant.
I understand, but it's not a public hearing, right? It's.
I've never, I've never done a work session on a site specific development proposal, I don't recommend that.
I don't know that it's necessary, I I, what do you guys want more information on, what what should we? Task staff with finding more information on, third parties, multiple third parties to clarify. Some of the emissions for asphalt plants, I mean, we've got Conell, obviously, we've got the applicant, we've got Laramo County, are there other? Entities out there, there was some question between the EPA, some one of the public comments was bringing up EPA things that didn't necessarily line up with. Different definitions from the county, can we get clarification on that kind of thing?
I feel like I did maybe some of the same research as people in the audience, um, you know. On both sides, right, and so I would like clarification on, um. Setback limits. And emissions, uh, health and environmental impacts. Well, and some of this is for Conell as well, like, to give you an opportunity to come and present. Based on all of the questions and concerns that you're hearing from the public and then also. Um, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read these emails, but I feel like it's only fair. To gather as much information and provide you the time to provide information as well. Um, because this is not our area of expertise, obviously. Um, and we only know what we know based on where we get the information, so. I would ask staff and Conell to provide as much hard fact data as possible. To give us the most robust. Amount of information possible. On all things asphalt plant, so that we can make the most educated decision possible in the interest of protecting the community, period. Knowing that we also want to be good partners and well, you know. It's just, this is a difficult one, I feel like, and complicated in a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
I would also ask that, and this was in my questions that I had emailed to you, that. By the time we come back together again, I would like to see the actual four elevations and the berm. Cross-sections that show the, I know you had some modeling in your slide that I could kind of see with the reflection, that's the first that I've seen of that. And that's some of the things that are within uh, land use code that we're supposed to see, so maybe a more robust actual site plan.
We don't offer that, we don't ask that of any other applicants, we've reviewed two-dimensional site plans with half of the.
I'm going based off the land use code.
I know I'm talk, I'm holding Mr. Warren to the same standard that we hold all other site plans do, though, just. In fairness.
I think Commissioner Shalay, you were referring to the the building architecture and four-sided architecture.
Yeah.
For one building, all buildings, the silo, could you provide some context?
Apologize, in land use code, it specifically states that it's supposed to be provided, and so. I understand that maybe in the past it's been different, I've reviewed one site plan as a planning commissioner in the last year. And we did receive that. So.
And I, and I, I agree with you.
No.
We we need to limit discussion from the audience, um, but Commissioner Shalay, I think. What I'm hearing you say is that there is a, there is a requirement in the land use code to provide architectural drawings for site plan review.
Right.
And what I'm hearing is um, that that you you didn't see enough for the entire site to feel confident in in voting on the architecture proposed.
That is right, which is one of the requirements of the site plan approval process, and just to clarify, this isn't me. Trying to be for or against anything, I feel like the process should be thorough for every applicant. And given the level of concern and the fifty-one pages of emails I still need to finish reading through. I just want to make sure that I have as much complete information as what's prescribed in the approved land use code to make the most informed decision.
I'm I'm kind of keeping a list of what I'm hearing, I'll read it back to you here in a moment.
Okay, do you, any other insider suggestions as to what? We could provide, I think emissions are the big one. Are there, you guys agree, what what else, what else from the board, we've heard emissions, some architectural review.
That it's really hard for for me personally to get a grasp on these numbers, these emission standards. You know, when it comes from different, you know, sources, you know, we've got a lot of, you know, emails too that, you know, they give. A number, and I I quite frankly don't know which is the this, the path. Um, in far as far as what we need for standards, I guess, you know, using the. Health Department. Those sources.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
When you're referring to, and I I'm just, I'm taking notes, trying to capture what's being said. Um, so referring to numbers and emission standards, that's what I heard. Are you referring to town standards, cuz the town doesn't have emission standards?
Talking about public safety standards.
So the standards that are associated with a state permit, the state regulatory guidelines. What what information does the planning commission want to see, I mean, we're happy to go and and obtain the information. But I not, what I heard was numbers and emission standards, and I don't know what I'm looking for yet, so I'm trying to get to what I need to go and find.
Um, I would say consistency, because I feel like that we're getting, we're getting a lot of different information. Um, I would say consistency, because I feel like that we're getting, we're getting a lot of different information here. And just the consistency of a lot of areas, you know. Noise, you know, what's the pollutants that are going to go out? What is the levels, you know, required levels?
Some of the emailed comments, yeah, I, I understand, some of the emailed comments. Are contradicting what the applicant is telling us. So I think just clarification. I mean, reading through some of these emails that are citing sources, unknown sources, I might add citing unknown sources. Internet sources. Are, they're contradictory, I feel like Mr. Warren and the applicant clarified a lot of it. But again, that's, that's, that's. Two sides, are there third party? Is there third party information out there that could act as a mediator between? The information we're seeing cited on some of these concerns and what was presented in the applicant's presentation?
So the, the, the clarification that's being sought is. What is the, the regulatory standard for emissions, noise, it's, you know, each of those different topics? Maybe who is the regulatory authority on those and does the application comply with those standards?
That would be tremendously helpful. Okay, that makes sense.
I, I think so.
Okay.
I, part of the question that I would ask too is if the, if a condition of approval was to. Comply with all applicable regulatory agencies and permits, would that satisfy the same concern?
It would for me.
And I'm just posing it as a question.
Some of my concern is that. Like we don't have a noise ordinance. That can't be enforced by Lerner County within the town limits unless they happen to be on site and notice it. That feels problematic to me to then just fall back to, well, we'll just rely on the other. Regulating agencies because we don't have a regulation. And as I heard in several of the emails that I read early are on in the day. One of the frustrations that I heard was a lack of planning and foresight and always reactive. And I think the town has worked really hard to change that in the last few years. And I would like to make sure that we're continuing that and making sure that we have things in place. You know, what happens if trucks decide to start taking the frontage road again like they were doing with the I, I twenty-five project and. Parking over by Taco Bell because it's convenient because they're hungry. And those impacts have impacted our bridges and our frontage road and our residents here, and so. I just want to make sure that there's. We, we're well vetted and Wellington has. Ordinances where there aren't other ordinances that will step in. If that makes sense.
I want to add to that, maybe as looking into the future and just being proactive. My major thing, like I said, is the environmental and health impacts, and so that emission dispersment model is going to be really important to me personally. In my research, which, you know. Google, but it was. From a legitimate source, it says between one point eight six miles and two point one seven miles is the safe. Distance to residential and schools. So that at the high end is eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-seven feet, which is well above the eight hundred feet that we're. Giving it, so I really need clarification on what that looks like and I need. Sources that are reliable and consistent information.
I'm going to come back a little bit because I feel like maybe. I don't, I, none of us, like you said, are chemists or know the regulations. But I do want to honor listening to what the public has to say. But I also want to listen to that with the truth in it and the, the, I don't, I don't want to say that they were, there are any lies, there aren't lies, but just the facts. Truth is not the right word, it's the facts. And I don't want to be deemed a person that would do any regulation of. Standards or policing or anything. We're just really trying to ask the question, you know, and knowing that this business is going to go in. Is going to comply with all of these regulation standards. Cause I don't know that it's my job or it can be my job, because I don't know, you know, like I said. What toxins and emissions are, but I do know, you know, what I hear, you know, and kind of just need to get some facts. Does that make a little bit more clarity is what I'm looking for? No.
And I don't know if this is possible and maybe it's out of bounds and if I'm out of bounds, Patty, you could tell me, but. Several of the things that I saw in staff recommendations and things that you were conditional requirements. Showed a lot of cost sharing models and so. Oddly, I'm concerned with overburdening the town with costs of things that we're requiring Cornell to do and. I don't know if there's a way to. Kind of maybe have an overall number of the financial impact that will have to the town. From a cost standpoint, I'm not talking about revenues, I don't know if there's revenues in asphalt for our town, but. I just want to make sure that we're not overburdening Cornell unnecessarily or overburdening the town with. Finances and things that we're requiring Cornell to do that maybe are outside what needs to be required, like if we added to it. Is kind of where I'm at, so I, I just am trying to be financially conscious all the way around as well.
Where are you Cody?
Sorry.
Ultimately, this is going to be on you, so are you in a good spot? Do you have a relatively clear picture?
I, I don't feel like I've got the clarity that would provide staff direction, but let me read back to you what I've heard so far. I heard a couple of comments. And this isn't in a particular order, I've tried to kind of theme it, but I heard that there was maybe a desire to have more time to consider the public comments received in writing. But most of those came out today, uh, because they were received after the packet, so I heard need more time. I heard that there was maybe a desire to have the full complement of the planning commission membership involved in making a decision. I heard a question about whether or not the written comments could be shared online and made available for public viewing. I heard that there was a desire to have the air dispersion modeling made available. I don't know if that's prior to a vote or. I have a question around the timeline on the air dispersion modeling. I also heard. Uh, questions about setback limits and wanting to have more information and sources with. And sources and consistent information on what are the appropriate setback distances? That one could be a little bit of a challenge because based on whose standards. I don't, based on what I've researched, I'm not sure we're going to find consistency. Because every report that I've read has a different number that they throw out there is what is right. I think certainly that we could provide more information regarding. What are the applicable county, state or, or otherwise regulations from those regulatory agencies? I heard. Concerns about health and environmental impacts that didn't have a lot of. At least I didn't make any notes on what was the direction for staff to provide for that. Um, I heard hard facts and data, which is obviously the root of what we're trying to get to. Maybe some more clarity on what facts we're looking for. Heard most information available regarding asphalt plants. Could you use some direction on what we're looking for in terms of, of the. Planning commission processes? I heard foresighted architecture and that one makes sense to me, I think we can certainly ask for that. Heard numbers and emissions on for standards, what are the standards, what's the enforcement or regulatory agency and, and do the operations propose comply with those applicable standards? I think we can get answers to that. Um, and then I had a second note on air dispersion modeling. And then a second note on sources and consistent information for setbacks. Which I think was just a copy and paste I just did, so. That's what I've heard so far and I, it's. We can certainly get some of that. We can get all of it. There are still some question marks there on what, what data is going to be helpful for the planning commission in consideration of a, of a site plan and how do we? Roll that out in a review. Uh, avenue, what's the timeline for that and what does it result in in terms of? Conditions of approval or voting requirements for the planning commission in relationship to this application?
So I feel like a lot of the confusion is coming from things that I asked for, so I'll clarify. And this is why I asked if thirty days was going to be enough, because I feel like a lot of the onus does kind of go back to. The engineer and Cornell. So I'm not comfortable making a vote without seeing the. Environmental impact study and the dispersion model. I'd also like to see the noise. Study and the traffic study. The traffic study already exists, so I'd just like to see it. Basically. To the health department's point, this is a really under researched quote unquote. Area, and so the more information we can have, the better. Just for own peace of mind, what I don't want to see is that twenty years from now. There's an issue and we had an opportunity to do something about it now. So the more information we can have. The better we'll sleep at night and we'll know that we're doing our job. Cause I did go over that and. Looking forward to the future and planning and protecting the community is what we're supposed to do up here, so. That's what I'm asking for. If it's still not clear, I can keep going.
I think clarification for me, for as fast as you can type. Is we've got a lot of public comments and a lot of unverified research calling the emissions from asphalt mixing plants toxic. We've got. Mr. Warren and Cornell saying emissions from asphalt mixing plants are not toxic. If there is any third party research, anything that we can clarify that, the reason being is because if. If you find it as toxic, the setback is entirely different, the setback kills your site. We basically, you would have to rework the entire thing because at that point we're in the twenty-six hundred foot setback. If this is truly a toxic, a toxic chemical producing plant. If it's not, the board of adjustments made the right decision, eight hundred foot setbacks apply. So that's the root of the problem for me is I would just, I just need to see more clarification and some more sourcing. That doesn't come from the applicant or the town, so clarify whether or not emissions from hot mixed asphalt plants are toxic. That's why I'm sitting right here.
And I would just, you know, because you don't have enough to do. I would just like to add to it. Maybe, um, the two things that I had mentioned. To Mr. Warren about the, um, now, see, notes are good. The, um. The ground well, no, the groundwater well monitoring. And the re remediation plan. Remediation plan I feel very strongly about, the other one I'm more interested in, like. What are the standards around that, what do other communities do, do they do that? And what does that look like and what kind of an impact does that have on? Mr. Warren and his business versus the benefits, the cost benefit. Just kind of a whole picture on that. Cause if it's, it's kind of like busy work, then that's. Not what I'm going for. I'm on the, especially on the, the monitoring of the groundwater. But the remediation plan is something that I would like. To, to see it at least explored. Given the problems we already have on Cleveland.
Yeah. I'm not sure the town is in the position to. And there's underground, you know, water's heavily regulated by the state, C D P H E. I don't know what the regs are about. Groundwater contamination, it sounds to me that. That the. The, the asphalt, the binder at room temperature is a solid. It's not, it doesn't sound like that's going to leak into. Groundwater, I mean, it sounds to me that probably any source of potential contamination would become from. You know, diesel, the diesel fuel storage, I can only assume those are double walled tanks, I don't know if that's the requirement now, but. So I'm not sure about. The groundwater piece, again, I'm not.
I guess I'm thinking more from the sediment from the, um, road base and all of that, that would be onsite and be used. And then if you have. Water, you know, like runoff and all of that, then that could potentially pose a problem. Because that already has, it's already been mixed once, right? So that's, that's where some of that concern comes from.
How's that Cody?
It certainly gave us a lot more to research. So we've got our work cut out for us, I think it might be useful to. In town staff is happy to do all these things. April doesn't seem very realistic for that volume of work. With limited staffing resources and other things that we're considering at the same time. I think it might be worthy of asking the applicant which of those things they're willing to take on to provide that information. In terms, some of those, I mean, I, I also heard, you know, non-town sources and non. Uh, applicant sources, some of these things are going to require someone to pay for something, modeling. Environmental impact studies and things of that nature, those are not things that the town staff can do. So there probably would be some clarification needed on. What level of expectation is, is desired by the planning commission and, and obtaining that information?
I thought the modeling was already contracted.
Right, and, and that was my understanding that that was under contract and it's a timing issue.
Yeah, because I, I don't believe the existing plant is operational, it sounds like your paving season starts in April and. I don't know, getting there, but you're, yeah, so I mean, I think that's good to get good figures from that, I think it's going to, they need to get to where they're actually. Running towards their capacities.
Oh, from what I understand, there are equations and models that can be used to kind of predict. I mean, am I wrong? Right, you can't test the existing facility, but there's. Predictive models, yes or no? This is really a question for you.
I'm gonna have to find that answer out. Cause that, that is, again, the environmental impact studies, it's not, they aren't required as part of the planning process, these are all new. And we're planning to do it as. Because of the request of Lerner County.
Just for the microphone, there's. If you don't mind, thank you.
But. The timing and, and just the sheer list of these is. I'm not gonna lie, it's burdensome, um. And, and, because again, Lerner County did a study on the, that's Martin Marietta's asphalt plant on Taft Hill. Whether or not that can be used as, as kind of the parameters of it, I, I just don't know the answers to that. Um, I'm not an environmental health. Professional either. But the, you know, the dispersion model, again, I don't know exactly how long it takes for that to actually be produced and the, the report to be produced and how that is. Interpreta, again, a lot of these things are why C D P H E. Lerner County have. Permits and standards and regulations, is it so these things are set? And now we're allowing a lot of interpretation from outside influences to say, well, C D P H E. C D P H E doesn't know what they're talking about.
Guys, please limit the conversation, I know it's getting late, you gotta keep it in though.
But at the same time. And we're, we're kind of into some uncharted territory, I guess, as far as I'm concerned. Not to say that we don't want to look at it and don't want to do it, it's just. That's what these permits are for. And that's what these compliance issues are for, and we've been operating under these for thirty years. And now that's, we need to start over in essence, so it's a little difficult.
I think. And again, I'm not an expert, but in my mind, if there were not a concern, they wouldn't have to be so highly regulated. So for peace of mind.
Right.
Um, and clarification. Definitely using the existing plant is a start, that's data, that's numbers from something that's going now, that's been going. And I realize that we're asking a lot, but it's so that we have that peace of mind. And I think that. I see my train of thought, it's been a long day. But yeah, that's, I mean, that's the concern, right, is these are regulations that are in place for a reason. So just having that information so that, so that there is nothing left to interpretation, that's where I was going. So that it, you know, we're looking at facts and we're looking at real, and we can say one way or the other, we did our due diligence. You know what I'm saying?
I do, I, I appreciate that.
I, I would say that, again, their. Their plant is shut for maintenance. We know this, they don't start paving till April, I mean, because the county has rules and schedules and when. And temperatures they will accept their pavement for their projects, they're always standard. So if you gotta wait till. What, June? What, June? To start measuring and then another three months for a report. I mean, I think, and this what sits here? This entire time.
Would you guys be comfortable allowing this as a conditional? We can approve it conditionally pending results for some of these tests that are gonna go. Once the plant is back up and operational.
I would say based on like the huge list that we gave, if. Like, and I say it like that, like a lot of it stems from, I mean, if you could read some of these emails and the things that they got from. Regulatory agencies telling people certain things based off of probably this much information, right? And then you're up here and I don't think that you're trying to sell us a bag of goods, but at the same time. You're here and there like way over here, right? And so we need clarification and understanding of what we're really looking at. And I recognize that there's a difference between. Asphalt for roofing and asphalt for roads, but not everybody understands that. And understand, so maybe some of this comes from that type of asphalt. And so to have that clarification and if we had. The majority of the information we're asking for, then things like that test, I would be comfortable doing a conditional approval on that. I'm not trying to slow the process to a halt, but at the same time. There are a lot of things that aren't quite as cumbersome to ask for.
Well, and to your point, uh, Commissioner Whitehouse. I, if the plant has been up and running for a long time and it's. Tested on a regular basis, then there are numbers existing that we could look at without having to wait.
Is that a possibility?
For sure.
Right?
I mean, I have the, the last.
Give me, here's the numbers, let's go.
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
That, that could make some serious headway if that's something we could have available. Within the next thirty days.
You know, looking at the, the, the study for Martin Marietta, I mean, though, that is local data, isn't specific to this area? I mean, I think that's reasonable. Again, I don't, I don't think waiting for eight months to figure out how that plant actually tests out. That is unreasonable in my mind.
We, yeah, I agree. We have to be able to conditionally allow this pending some of these things, yeah? Conditionals.
I'm not willing to say tonight that I approve it on these conditions.
I don't, I think we're past that.
Yeah, okay. But I would look at the numbers and then be able to make a much better decision.
I have a question. Would people be, would this commission be comfortable tabling this for two months? Sounds like one month is unreasonable. Is that reasonable to all parties here? Again, I'm asking a question.
I would be in favor of that.
You've probably seen during the headlight looks because I don't have any standards for remediation plans, groundwater, environmental health. Um, air dispersion modeling, so I mean, these are all. Just, I'm just speaking from the cuff here. These, this is, you know, easily sixty to a hundred page documents. Each that I don't have any experience in reviewing, so when I get that information, I'm gonna do what with it? And I'm gonna bring it back to this commission, it's gonna do what with it?
We can't analyze it, we're not experts.
Well, and again, I, I think they're good questions. It's good information to have. What is the desired result of that information? Because I, I, what I'm, is I piece this together, I think. And I'm not trying to put words in, in the commissioner's mouths. But I don't know what I'm going to learn from this information that isn't already regulated by another state agency in terms of what are the standards? What is the measures for compliance? And it's a yes or no, do they meet or not? If they don't, that state agency doesn't issue that permit and they don't operate.
Well, one, I think part of the problem is that we don't all understand what those standards are, right? And so we have conflicting information and we're trying to understand. Um, and as far as the remediation goes. That information is out, I mean, we have a resident here who understands all of this, right, and how this works. So the information is available, the remediation isn't an unusual. Request of industrial industries when they're. When they deal with.
Cody, is that something you could put together? Just a clarification on the standards. If we can get. Previous, a year's worth of data, two year, twenty years, whatever you have available data wise from your emissions testing. And a clarification on the standards and the permits and what it takes to issue each permit and have that available. For a continuation packet, does that help anyone?
I don't know that, again, if this is coming out of the state or the EPA or the county. They have people who are experts who are looking at this stuff and evaluating the data. And they understand the standards. I mean, I think we're at the point where. I don't think that data dump is gonna provide any clarity to us because we don't know how to interpret it. I would suggest if we're looking at the standards and they comply, I think. That's really what i- is sort of the information that we could. You know, uh. Interpret or, or go with, you know, I, again, I don't know, we can go into this deep dig and I don't know that we've done this on. Any other applicant. I mean, I've been sitting here for five years and this is the most complex, most comprehensive. Report that I've ever seen. It's quite interesting and there's a lot of things that this, everyone has gone through. We generally don't see this stuff. So again, I, I don't know that I recall this level of scrutiny being. Put, it wasn't put into that batch plant for concrete that was put in over by, uh. What is it? Fireside, uh, the storage area is going, is there for a couple of years? There's some concerns about dust. Never heard any concerns about groundwater, traffic or anything, you know, I mean, I know things have changed in our town and we're growing up, but. I'm just, you know, are we, are we being unreasonable? I mean, not that I don't ca- I do care. I just, I'm just putting that out there.
And, and I do hear that too, you know, certainly not wanting to be dismissive. I, I guess my biggest concern is I don't wanna. Put a lot of staff resources and time into researching something and miss the mark and not meet the expectations that's going to be meaningful for this commission.
Are there going to be toxic chemicals that are produced or emitted through this plant? That is the most, I mean, that's what. Eric, uh.
Just clarification.
Chairman Sarter asked, right? I think that is the baseline. That's like the through line for a lot of these comments and the emails. That's the highest concern. Is eight hundred feet enough? Are kids gonna be okay? Are they going to develop brain cancer? Are we going to have skin lesions? Are we going to get lung cancer? Does it need to be twenty six hundred feet? I mean, this is the concern, right? And if it's under researched, I mean, I would like to offer the health department another opportunity to come up here after listening to this discussion from the board. And if there's anything you wanna add or clarify, I would love that. I mean, that's the concern. Is it going to be okay long term? And that's a, I mean, that's a legitimate thing. I don't think it's overreaching and, you know, if I had been sitting on the board when the batch plant was. Brought to the board, maybe I'd have the same concerns, but I feel like it's my job and as a resident here with four kids. I wanna know.
Cody, what do you absolutely have to have tonight? I don't think any of us are getting any sharper as the hours tick by. But I also don't think we're at a point where we're going to vote on this either, so I think unfortunately tabling is imminent. Do you have to have the direction and the clarity now, or are we able to give you that after? We've had a chance to review some of the public comments. We've had a chance to digest some of this, cause. I mean, a couple of days to digest a site plan of this magnitude, to take into account all the different facets of this. It's frankly not enough time. So can we have more time to do our own research and do our own settling out of these? Provide you with direction, maybe individually over the next couple of weeks? Maybe it's not a April. Agenda item, but hopefully by May. After we've all kind of settled on a few of these things, you have some clear information. I, I don't see that being. I don't see that happening tonight either, so I don't wanna sit here and spend any more time spinning wheels if we don't have to.
You know, I'm wondering Cody, are we? As a planning commission and us reviewing a site plan. Really what our job is here, you know, as, as I'm reading through the recommendations, site plan review will be done by the planning commission. You know, and it says here, environmental health issues are controlled by county, state, federal agencies. So. Are we to be looking at these items for site plan review? I am.
The clarification.
I mean.
The clarification on the toxic chemicals I think is pertinent because it speaks to the setbacks. And that is something we need to look at.
Okay.
So if that.
I'll agree.
The toxic versus not toxic, I'm sorry to put you in that position, but if that's not clear, then we are, we're not doing our job. But if we get clarification on that through third party, other research methods. And we put the question of an eight hundred foot setback versus a twenty six hundred foot setback to bed. Then I agree with a lot of what you said. Some of this is out of our purview and we really shouldn't be going into this deep of a delve on it. But that clarification, I feel like needs to happen.
Could I ask, would it be inappropriate for us to each email you Cody, like the things that? We would like to see and then you could, since we can't email amongst ourselves, right? Then you could then come back in an email to all of us saying that, like kind of. Combine what we all said. To show us what we've done to your world.
I, I, I hear what you're saying and one of the concerns that, that comes to my mind is that you can. Give direction to staff to do X, Y, and Z, but you're also giving guidance to the applicant on what they need to do for next steps. And that's hard for us to do when you're communicating. To staff, to the applicant, to, and not in a public meeting where they're presenting their application. So there is some need to give some direction to the applicant on timelines and what your expectations are to see from what they're doing. In addition to what staff would be preparing and bringing back.
Maybe let's do this in steps. We all kind of agree that the clarification, clarification on the toxicity is first and foremost.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say.
Setbacks. So step one, let's do that. That's clear guidance for the applicant. That's clear guidance for town staff. It's research that hopefully we can put together by the May meeting and then we'll see what happens. If we have to, we can always table it again if we've got a clear direction. I don't wanna do that. One way or the other, but we can, it's an option.
I was gonna offer that maybe. Maybe table the, at least the vote till May, but in April, maybe almost, I don't know what you call it in planning, but like a status conference. In case there's more direction that we need to give to the applicant, cause I don't wanna leave him hanging for two months for him to come in for us to go. Oh, well, we still need A through Z plus one, two, three. Because I'm cognizant of the fact that time is money. And. I don't wanna, I don't wanna overburden him unnecessarily with his time and effort. I think he's gone. A long way so far to really try to answer questions, meet with residents of the town, answer our questions. And. I think maybe if we have a. And if we have things to email at the same time, then if there's additional direction that comes from that, he would know that by April. Does that make sense?
Would part of that guidance for, uh, the applicant be that could we get? I don't know, the last two years, that was September of, uh, summer of twenty one was your last. Testing, is that correct?
It was, uh, November of twenty one, which that's when we went to natural gas, which would be applicable to what we're looking at here.
Mr. Warren, I've got Ms. Schneider up behind you too.
No, no.
So I wanna be careful with the existing data. They don't have air toxics data. Um, they just have in their, their permit, it's kind of, they'll set up a limit and I have their permit with me, so they let you know. And it's in pounds per year, so that is very hard for us to translate then to you guys, so. Um. They, but when they do their stack testing and everything like that, that's when we're getting particulate matter, carbon monoxide and oxides of ni- nitrogen. So that's what they have good data on. The rest of this though, um, what we're really interested is understanding their air toxics. The plant does produce air toxics, but. It's the concentration that determines the toxicity. It's the concentration, the exposure and all these other things, so it. It takes a lot more analysis than just what we have onsite for them. I mean, we have, I have, I already know there are pounds per. Year for, for Meldahide and a couple of other things. Um, and, and like I said, you know, Laramie County did take, um, we had a big concern about a larger facility. It had different controls than what Conell really currently has, but it also had more throughput. And both facilities do use our RAP, which you guys have heard a lot about. Um, both, usually it's at fifteen to twenty percent addition, I think, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. Martin Marietta does the same. I finally said their name, um, but it's, uh, everybody else did, so I guess here I am. Um. So we do have, um, emission factors, pounds per ton of asphalt produced. We have that currently, but like to give you an example. From, uh, Martin Marietta's study when we were evaluating them. Um, we were looking at their formaldehyde level because of their five hundred thousand tons per year. Their formaldehyde pound per year was at fourteen hundred and seventy three. And then with Conell, their pound per year is at nine hundred and thirty. And again, this is, this is based on the, um, the fuel, the natural gas. It's, it's an incomplete combustion. So it has a tendency to release a little bit more into the environment. It's then we have to take that data, the modeling, just to see how it mixes with the atmosphere and things like that. To determine how far it's going to impact into the community and figure out those setbacks. So that's why this is really hard to just say use existing data. Um, I can. Compare and give you guys some more information off of the Martin Marietta one probably to help with how we made our decisions on that one. Um, but again, it's not apples to apples exactly because of the dish, different throughput. The different, um, controls that Martin Marietta has, um, versus Conell's site. Again, you know, smaller quantities going through too, but different controls matter too and hours of operation and all those things, so. If it helps, I could maybe put a comparison together, um, to document that for something soon, so you have that. Um, but I'm still really interested in the emission characterization of the actual plant. That's the best data that you'll get.
Which I think we can consider as a conditional approval for later. Yeah, perfect. I think the information would be helpful if that's a quick and easy put together, since something you could get to town staff.
Some comparison, yeah.
Yeah, comparison chart.
Yep.
And any additional information that you have about, sure, I mean, you've been listening the entire time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. And it's hard, it air toxics, it is very controversial because you do get in there and they are like, depending on the exposure. And how much you've been exposed to, benzene is horrible. It's a carcinogen, formaldehyde is, all of them, B-Tex. Um, the, you guys are probably familiar, the state health department, um, finally evaluated tons of data for oil and gas. We set up a setback because the level of, um, emissions from oil and gas in the very beginning stages was so harmful. So they were recommending over two thousand feet. So if that's at all, but we don't have anything for asphalt plants. Um, again, they are, it's, they do emit air toxics. Probably at a lower concentration than, uh, most, hence they're typically a minor source permit or they're considered as synthetic minor. Because of all the controls put on them. So it helps reduce what emissions are coming off.
Well, I think this is a good point. This is where we're actually using. Subject matter experts who've done some of this work, who maybe will provide the comparisons instead of. Uh, again, I'm not sure some of this stuff is going to give us much more clarity on. These, I think, I mean, so you have. You have data, which is all the raw stuff, and then you have information, which is now it's been synthesized and someone's actually. Turned it into something that. Non-experts can help interpret, which is what. The town does with water usage and flows and all that. I mean, they, they're pulling in all this data and they. Have to make it so we can understand it, cause we're not civil engineers, we're not operators, so. I think this is a good way forward to get closer to it without. Uh, uh, trying to understand something that is, takes advanced study.
I agree. I was gonna suggest that too, to lean in on those experts. Any information you can give will be greatly appreciated. And then again, if you could provide like the traffic study and those things that you already have. Um. I would just like to say that in our booklet here, the role of the planning commission is to, number one. Form recommendations based on the promotion of the community's health, safety and welfare in the future. So I don't know that. We're asking unnecessary questions.
So specifically comparison charts from Laramie County Health? Previous, does the previous data do us any good from Conell?
I, I would still do the air dispersion modeling, but for the air toxics portion of it.
I'm just thinking for specific things we can ask staff to obtain before the next meeting.
How difficult is it to provide maybe? The testing results of the regulatory agencies for the closest, right, the one that's right there at Harmony and I twenty five? Cause that would be most applicable to. Wellington, right? Like I know it's not as windy at Harmony and I twenty five, but you know, maybe some of those testing results. As a way of showing some of your data. I mean, do you have those yourself, Mr. Warren? I mean, do you have those yourself, Mr. Warren?
I'm, I'm confused at what you're asking. Are you asking for the latest test data of that, that the county and CDPHE has done? Or?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, our last.
As a, as a form of data that would actually be useful, instead of just a bunch of numbers we don't understand.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can provide that. And I, I'm happy to go and get a schedule on this dispersion model and. And get more answers on what that will take. And if we can do that from a. Theoretical, the right way to go, but interpretive model of our existing facility and see what we can do there. And have an answer back to Cody on what that looks like. Since that sounds like it's a critical component to what everybody's looking for, really the critical component.
Helpful, very helpful.
And then like in the non-boring area, the architectural. Stuff, it matters.
Yeah, if, if we're not going to get approved, I don't really want to spend the money on architectural renderings of offices. That, that's really where that all started from with all due respect. Cause that is an expensive piece to go. And if it's all about air quality. Then what the buildings look like at this point in time doesn't matter. And what the staff has told me is. That that will be part of the building permit and need to be approved as part of the building permit as well. So that's why we're at the stage we're at, just so you understand where we're coming from.
And I'll add too, just so you guys are aware, emissions testing can be very costly. So if he's going to be testing for air toxics. At his current site, that's going to be costly. And then, um, the dispersion modeling is also an added cost. To try to then take that data and account for weather and all those other things that are going to contribute to where those. Those pollutants are moving through your community.
Do both of you have a pretty fair grasp of what is being asked? Clarification materials, more examples? If it's a yes, and you can get it to town staff by the next planning commission meeting. It will help.
If you're a schedule and, and more detail on dispersion modeling. Yes. Um, past records of our, of our testing, yes. Those are the two things I've heard.
Okay. I think that'll go a long ways. If that's an easy fix and an easy. Email to, to Cody and town staff. That'd be great. I mean, we can get that for April. What does the extra thirty days get? Does an extra thirty days give you any more time to? Gather pertinent information? What, what are you doing? I know, buddy. I know, I'm with you.
I'm pondering how to reply to that question. Town planning staff is, is it a lack of resources right now to keep up with our current workload and demand? Um, and these are some pretty big asks that we'll have to evaluate. So I don't feel like thirty days is going to give our town staff enough time to adequately. Dig into this and keep up with our other responsibilities.
Then we need to.
It's a popular response.
We need to trim what we're asking them.
Or add more time. And I know both of those are difficult things to do.
Same. Does that help you?
We can cert- our town staff could certainly meet that deadline. Turning it around for the April meeting would not be very realistic with our current workload. Based on what I'm hearing, identifying those. Couple of, of, uh, chunks of information that you're looking for. I think we could turn that around. I don't know if the applicant and, and county health could help meet those timelines as well. Month or two, thirty days, sixty days, is there a?
I mean, for, for what we're being asked, thirty days would be fine.
For, for existing data that we have, yeah, I can put something together. Um, but. Anything that needs to be tested.
That, well, that, I guess that's my point. They, what we're asking them to do can be done in thirty days. So. What are we asking Cody to do that's going to take another thirty days?
Well, I think part of it is the, what they currently have on their plate is so much what we're asking entirely, but what they already are currently working on. It doesn't have anything to do with this.
This will just be taking their data and putting it into a packet.
We're asking the town staff to do more than just that. I mean, we're asking for research on setbacks and different things like that. So. Would it be crazy to give ourselves, you know, as soon as you all can get the data to us, maybe. Town staff passes that along. We have time to digest that and go through it since we've all admitted we're not experts. And then allow time, town staff till May to put together their information and bring it back after we've had time to. Thoroughly review everything that we've received.
How does that fit in with the public process if we're reviewing this independently outside of the meeting?
Well, my recommendation would be I've, I've heard that there's, there's some staff research that's required to get some information relative to. Toxicity, what is toxic in our setback requirements for, for, um, use standards in the industrial zone district. I heard the applicant willingness, uh, willingness and, and county staff willingness to help provide some information on past, um, records and their. Air mission characterization. Once that information is given to town staff, we're going to have to do at least a minimal level of evaluation of what does that say? And prepare that information for the planning commission with some recommendations. Based on our input on that, we don't typically just. Give you, here's the raw information. Now do what you want with it. We typically try to provide you some recommendations. So there's going to take a little bit of time involved in that. Um, based on what I'm hearing, I would feel confident that, that our town staff would be able to turn this around in the sixty day window for like a May meeting. I don't have a lot of confidence in being able to, to push that volume of work through by the April agenda deadline.
That's not, again, I think that's an unreasonable burden to you. I mean, that's, yeah.
We're, we're here to do the work. We want to do the work and we want to get it right. I just don't want to miss the mark and I don't want to miss a deadline with. Partial information when we could work collaboratively and get full information.
Yes, you may.
One more question, just on a clarification. So if this information is provided in May, what, what can we expect?
As far as a decision or as far as?
Just no more of the pro- I'm looking for the process and understanding the process, because this isn't defined in any. And, and I, again, I completely appreciate. What the, the health and safety aspect and, and what you're looking out for. I completely respect that, but we're. As far as guidance goes, uh, of a process, we're a little bit off. Or a lot bit off the rails from what I've read through is for the town process. So I'm just trying to look for what is the next step and how does this proceed?
You'll basically, town staff will gather the information, put together another packet similar to tonight. Um, with kind of like an addendum packet, basically, right? So there'll be some new information, but essentially the motions will, will be the same. We'll, we're still reviewing a site plan. And we'll still have to move table or deny.
Okay, is it, will we present again in May then as part of that or, and is it public comment? I mean, if we go through this again, uh, the, those type of issues, I guess.
Right. I, I think realistically tabling it and you've allowed public comment, I, and presenting new information. I, I can't imagine that a situation where there wouldn't be additional public comment allowed. I would expect that it'll, it'll probably generate an additional. Uh, round of written comments, like similar to what you've received today. We typically get those, those comments after the packet is published. So there's a pretty big. Order for staff to consolidate all that into packet information and get it to you with a short turnaround in time to review it. So that's a, I think you could expect that. And in terms of output on this. We'll think through, you know, the staff report and recommendations. And again, we're certainly happy to, to do some of this research and work with other partners to get information. I don't know that it would dramatically change the recommendations that town staff has already provided in your staff report in terms of. We can just define what is, what are these boundaries? What are these numbers? Our recommendation is likely still going to be rely on state agencies, county agencies for their. Permit and operation requirements because the town doesn't have standards for those things. So I, I think we can certainly clarify the information that's being sought. I don't know that it's going to dramatically change. The recommendation, which would be to follow these other standards that are already in place.
It may not need to. I think a, a good bit of this. Part of the reason we're doing this, if not the majority of the reason we're doing this is just more to shine a bigger light for the public's consumption. So if that information is out there and it's reissued in a pack, planning commission packet and the public gets a chance to see it again. That, I think that's more important than it is to necessarily change. You know, a recommendation or go a different direction with this. It's, it's public consumption. Fair enough. Anything else? Larry, Commissioner.
Yes, please.
Thank you for bearing with us. Um, I moved to table the site plan review for Conell Resources to a regular meeting of the planning commission to be held May first. Twenty twenty-three at six thirty at the Wilson Leaper Center, thirty-eight hundred Wilson Avenue, Wellington, Colorado.
Roll call, please. That was a second by Commissioner Whitehouse, if you didn't catch it.
Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
Whitehouse?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. Yes, we do need to move on to the second item. Sorry. Um, that's it for Conell, folks. I don't know if you want to stick around for zoning map discussion. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate it.
Would you, Commissioner, would you want to allow a five minute recess for people to kind of filter out before we dive?
I'm going to break rules and just allow a five minute recess. I think that's pertinent. You know, reading all the Bob stuffs and trying to get a little better at it and technically. Good, okay. Uh, next order of business is, um, an update on the recommendations on adoption of the zoning map for the P public zoning districts. Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so just some real quick background context. Um, this planning commission has discussed the, uh, updates to the zone map, uh, a couple of times in work session. In December, the planning commission made a, voted to make a formal recommendation to the board of trustees. On, uh, recommended updates to the zoning map. Um, the procedural process, the planning commission makes a recommendation and the board of trustees makes the final decision on those updates. The board of trustees has also held a work session on the zoning map as it was, uh, existed at that time. And subsequent to that, we heard comments from both the planning commission and the board of trustees relative to. How to handle the P public zone district and the zone map update process. The planning commission had asked for a work session to consider that, that very topic on how to handle the P public zone districts. And we did that last month in February. Yeah, February. As a result of that, um, town staff put together an inventory of properties that are currently zone P public and properties that. Are, could be or have been zone P, P public or something similar. Um, trying to kind of group those categories of what's going on on the property that would warrant, uh, either a public zone category or something different. And the, in a nutshell, the result of that conversation, evaluating each of those properties across town. Um, the planning commission had recommended, w- we, why don't we create some consistency in how those are being handled? Um, and in large part, the direction was to show on the zone map if, if a property was for drainage purposes. And not developable for other things that ought to have a similar or the same, um, zoning characterization as the adjacent. Uh, subdivision for which it was supporting. That is what we've tried to accomplish on the, um, um, the revised draft in your agenda packet. Um, to show each, for each of the parcels that was discussed by the planning commission. Reflecting the recommended zoning for those particular parcels and that map is. About as clean as we feel we can make it in PDF right now. Um, so that is pretty close to the, the final. Uh, map, at least in terms of intent. Uh, I am working, um, with a, a company that does GIS. Specific work and, and they're creating a new base layer, um, for that. And that's. Nearly, it reflects the same recommendations here. It's a lot cleaner looking map. It'll look really nice. Um, but I didn't have it for the packet. So, um. Hopefully this, this version of the revised zoning map, um, meets the, um, expectations. The planning commission gave staff direction for at the last work session. And the reason we brought it back for you today was to formally make a recommendation to the board of trustees on. The zone map updates specifically with the P public zone district would require a motion and a vote. And we couldn't do that in a work session. So we're here tonight to seek that motion and vote. Are there any questions on the background or the draft map that's included in your agenda packet?
I have one question. Once we voted on this and if it's approved to be sent to the board of trustees, well. The parameters that we used during that work session be captured in the presentation to the board of trustees. On this specific part of it, because if you'll recall, when we had that work session, we had kind of formulated. Some parameters on when and if something would be public. And if it didn't meet those parameters, then we move to zoning it differently. So that that's very clear, both to the public that's looking at the packet and. Hearing our recommendation and also to the board of trustees, that it wasn't a haphazard thing, but that we actually had very specific criteria that we were using.
Do you, yes, we're happy to make sure that information is included. Do you feel like the, the inventory that's in the agenda packet captures that? Sorry, I, I don't have a print copy here either, but.
I think just for simplicity to state that there was a very, um. Uniform way that we looked at each property and for the purpose of consistency across the board, not judging any one property. As a standalone, but using a formula. Just to have that knowledge, both public and for the trustees, um, in terms of clarifying our method.
And part of that was staff's recommendation to follow best practices. That you had brought up that kind of got the ball rolling on the way we decided to do those. So, yeah, I agree. If that, that information probably should be in the presentation to the board of trustees.
Okay. Um, certainly happy to do that. I'm just getting, not wanting to miss the mark. Do we feel like that some of that language from the staff report on this item, the staff report from the. Work session item, language from the minutes, any of that language feel appropriate?
Kinda. I think I would hate to even say go back and listen to what we were saying as we were looking at each one. But if we were actually able to outline what that was. I think that would be good.
Well, we talked a lot about consistency and what was around the areas. I mean, I think we all remember that.
The drainage and would this happen? And we have those few things and we very systematically.
Yeah, would you, would you ever be able to have, you know, a civil, civic gathering?
Applied best practices, um, brought out the land use code that. Um, that specifically defines some things in public, like the playgrounds and the structures. And then if it didn't fit the land use code, it got.
Right. And if something might have that use in the future, but doesn't currently have that use. We didn't consider mites. We only considered.
What's physically.
What is physically existing right now.
Is that fair enough, Cody?
That's fair enough. I can reflect that in the report.
Yeah, there should be.
So, Mr. Bird.
Yes, sir.
Would that report without digging, I'm kind of looking through this stuff. Would that report, because I mean, I asked you that question about, let's say, the, uh, drainage facility that is north of. Uh, the River of Life Church, that in fact, that that is a tract and not a, it's not platted. So it's actually not. Buildable. That was, would that information be related at all? Or is that even pertinent to go to the trustees? Cause we did discuss it, because I was like, why couldn't you build a house there?
Wh- what, what other protections are in place to prevent undesired uses on a drainage facility? Yeah. Um, I can certainly touch on that. Um, it is platted. It's platted as a tract and tracks are not buildable. Um, but I can certainly clarify, these are the things in place for those drainage related structures that protect them for drainage purposes.
Thank you for clar- clarify with more precise language than I used.
My apologies. It wasn't directed, but I, I'm, I'm happy to provide the information in the, in the staff report.
Okay, board, any other comments for Cody? Any other direction? No? Okay. Um, we did have a public kind of comment sheet, but it's my fault. I didn't specify that you needed to sign in for this as well. So if anyone would like to come up. Make public comment on the zoning map, now is the time. Really? I know. Name for the, for the crowd, if you would, please.
Scott Flowers, eighty-three, eleven, Sixth Street. I was just, it's just a question. I know we discussed about, uh, one, two, uh, three of our residential lots on Sixth Street. Um, right there at Grant. Or not Grant, excuse me, Garfield and Sixth. Maps still shown that were transitional. We just wanted to make, okay. Just want to make sure that we were actually going to. Yeah, and you did, and I, I'm speaking in behalf of Chris also on the corner. He did reach out to me. He is out on service duty again with the Air Force. That you guys had received his email requesting him to be residential.
Yes, we, we have received that email correspondence, the original email correspondence we received from him said that he wanted to be commercial. He kind of flipped that script and sent a second follow-up and said we want, that he wanted to be residential. The, the map that's in the packet does not reflect that. We did not make that change because that wasn't the direction from the planning commission. Relative to the public zone district. We didn't want to usurp that. The avenue talking about one subject and shoehorn in something different. But we have received communication from your neighbor, Chris, um, on, at Sixth and Garfield requesting residential zoning. And we intend to present that to the board of trustees.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, public comment closed. Guys, anything else? Mr. Bird, anything else? I hope not. Oh, good lord, you and me both. All right, can I have a motion on this?
Connect, I would like to make a motion to move, to, I move to forward a recommendation to the board of trustees. To approve the official zoning map as presented, including recommendations for the P public zone district as presented.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Hoyer?
Yes.
Connect?
Yes.
Whitehouse?
Yes.
Sarter?
Yes. Hey. Next item, Cody, when you're done taking notes, any communications or? Announcements from staff?
The, um, announcement I'd make is that we are, um, currently advertising for, uh, vacancy on the planning commission. So if you're aware of anyone who's interested in serving on a board or commission, encourage them to apply. Application deadline is March seventeenth. Applications on our website, um, and it's a fillable form. They can submit it there. We also have two, two, uh, two terms on the board of adjustment that are expiring. And the applicant, or the current applicants may be seeking reapplication, but it's also open to anyone else who might want to apply there too. So if you know of anyone interested in the board of adjustment, um, maybe take a look there. I believe there's maybe another, um, Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails seat available as well. So just encouraging, there's a couple of vacancies out there, specifically planning commission, um, and board of adjustments if people are interested. Wanting that direction.
And we can be on two, right, for the town?
Right, the, the board of adjustments and the planning commission allow co-membership. Um, so you could, it's possible for a person to serve on both the planning commission and the board of adjustments.
Okay.
And the only vacancy for the planning commission or expiring term is both the same, right? That's the same one that was expiring as well?
Right.
Is the vacancy we have.
Yeah, the, the one vacancy and then, yes, that was the term that was expiring. The, and then we purposely didn't advertise it before this because we didn't want to appoint someone for one month and then have them reapply. So that didn't seem fair to anyone, so we coincided the expiration with the, with the advertisements.
Yeah, awesome. Anything else, anybody? Uh, no, adjourned.
Never gets old.